Great, okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 19th, 2021, meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board. We have a quorum of six tonight, so I will tell the meeting to order. Let's see, I think most of you have put a planning board in front of your names, PV. I think Lupita, if you could do that, that would be great. And before we proceed, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes. This is kind of something fun that a chair can do. I'd like to reflect on some relevant city of Boulder history before we get started, just for a couple of minutes. You may see my background here, and I'll go ahead and share a little something as well. Let's see. Hopefully, people can see this picture. So some of this text that I'll be talking about comes from Wiki. The but last week, there was a city event to celebrate the recent naming of the building where we would normally meet in non-COVID times. The municipal building was renamed in honor of Penfield Tate II, who was the city's only black mayor from 1974 to 1976. Penfield Tate devoted his life to fighting for social justice. And one story in particular highlights his bravery and standing up for the for principles of equity. In 1974, Tate introduced an amendment to Boulder's Human Rights Ordinance that would have prohibited employers from firing an employee based on their sexual orientation. It passed in city council, but Boulder residents were incensed and demanded it be voted on by the general public. The amendment lost by a landslide, and Boulder residents sought to recollete and every council member who voted in favor of the amendment. Excuse me. Tate barely escaped recall, but City Councilman Tim Fuller did not escape recall. Protesters of the amendment sent tape mail and death threats to Tate and his family. Due to his passionate advocacy for LGBTQ rights, Tate was surrounded by controversy and thus failed to win reelection for mayor. He remains an icon of early LGBTQ rights supporter, an icon of early LGBTQ rights supporters in Boulder and Colorado. When we're finally back to a time where we can meet in person, I hope you'll join me in feeling a sense of pride and progress as we meet in this space. Thanks so much to city staff and Boulder's leaders who made this lasting tribute a reality. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over. Allison Eckland is here for in Jean Gatz's shoes tonight, and we'll be supporting the meeting. Thanks so much for being here, Allison. I'll turn it over to you to tell us the rules of participation in virtual meetings.
Thank you. We are aiming to keep these meetings respectful and orderly, and so as such, we have some specific guidelines for this evening. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. More about this vision and the full rules of decorum can be found on the participate in city council meetings page of the city's website. The following are examples of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, dehumanizing language, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by. And individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. So if you wish to speak later on in the meeting, you can hover your mouse toward the bottom of your screen. You should find the raise hand icon, or if you're calling in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. You will not be able to unmute yourself until the chair asks you to speak, and then you'll see the option to unmute at that point.
All right.
Thanks, David.
Thank you so much, Allison. Okay, well, with that, let's go on to item two in our agenda, which is approval of minutes. Cindy sent out two sets of minutes for approval. The first one, July 15th, 2021, and the second one is July 22nd, 2021. Does anyone have any comments or discussion on those? Maybe since on the July 22nd, we have had recusals, so maybe we'll go ahead and vote on them separately. Does anyone want to make a motion on the July 15th minutes? I'll move to approve the July 15th, 2021 minutes as amended.
Happy to second.
Sarah Silver seconds. Okay, let's do just a hand raise on that one, all in favor of the July 15th. That was the joint meeting with Tab. Great. John, I think you froze. Can you speak? Because I think you're unmuted.
I think he's frozen.
I
Yeah, now we can hear you, but you're just kind of frozen himself, so I'll ask for a voice call on these. Oh, now you're kind of unfrozen. Okay, great. And then the July 22nd one, I, let's see. Lupita, if you if you don't need to vote on those since you weren't in the meeting, do I have a motion on that one? I'll go ahead and move since I moved on the other one. I vote, I move that we approve the July 22nd minutes as amended.
I'm happy to second also.
Sarah seconds and raise of hands for vote on that one. I see five votes with one abstention, which we do with per minute. So thank you so much. So both sets of minutes are approved. Thank you, Cindy, for always providing us with amazing, high-quality minutes and taking our our comments. We appreciate it. So with that, let's go to item three in the agenda, public participation. Now is the time where the public is invited to talk to us about anything on their minds, on anyone's mind, except for anything that is open for public hearing. Tonight, we have one public hearing item, and that is the 2022 to 2027 capital improvement program. So if you have any comments on the CIP, please reserve those for later in the meeting. Any other subject will be doing three minutes, three minutes for public hearing. So I only see one one really attending. Lynn, did you want to raise your hand, or shall we go on? Yes, I see your hand raised. So I'll go ahead and ask Allison if if you could permit Lynn to speak and start a timer. Let's see. All right, Lynn, you may go ahead.
Yeah, well, you know, I saw Jacob. Hey, Jacob, I see you, but you didn't see me at the Band on the Bricks two weeks ago. Isn't that interesting? I thought you people are supposed to know each other. Well, I don't know Jacob because he's new, and he doesn't know me. Well, I know him because I see his video. That's a problem, and it's your problem as well as city councils. So change it now, yesterday. Okay? Now, I'm not going to talk about the CIP, right? Because it's on hearing tonight. But guess what? Everything I have to say is ultimately about the CIP. Because that's what we run the city with. All these funds that we are underfunded for, our open space, our infrastructure, our flood and stormwater with CU South, and you're adding insult to injury, even entertaining CU South. That should not have even ever been in anyone's wildest imagination. Thirty-five thousand more people to Boulder, the worst kind of people, you know, the Hill Riots kind of people. All they're doing at CU South is displacing. They might be able to get the faculty into that affordable housing. But so what? They're bringing thirty-five thousand more students to Boulder. Where are we going to put them all? You know, my property taxes, I just got my bill, you know, it's so high. I haven't had a cup of coffee here in in a decade. I can't afford anything in Boulder. And you know, that would help your sales tax revenue so that you could pay for your infrastructure and all the things you're going to talk about tonight, couldn't it? But no, my property tax is too high for me to buy anything. That's a problem, isn't it? Inflated values, water view, gun barrel, armory, olive, you know, everywhere you look, Macy's, you know, all this affordable housing again and again, I'll say, the affordable housing is not affordable because it brings people that need jobs to take care of the affordable housing residents that can't afford to live here. So it's an endless cycle, isn't it? Those those people have to live somewhere, and they they're displaced from Boulder. And the list gets bigger and bigger for the people that can't afford, and the homeless gets bigger and bigger, and the three point, you know, three million dollars to chase the homeless around town. Stop already. Stop subsidizing growth. Don't even think about CU South, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn. And you ended just on the three-minute mark. Thank you so much. Okay, so with that, I don't think I see any other members of the public. So unless somebody appears within a couple of seconds here, I'll go ahead and close the public comment, the general public comment, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. We have no dispositions or call-ups, so we'll skip over number four and go right into our public hearing item for the night. Tonight, we have a public hearing and consideration of a recommendation to the city manager and city council on the recommended 2022-2027 capital improvement program, CIP. And I know we have Jacob here and Chris. Jacob, did you want to introduce or should we go right to Chris?
Thank you, Dave. No introductory comments. We'll go directly to Chris, and I'll let him take this item from here.
Thank you, Jacob.
Of course.
Thanks, Jacob. And thanks to the board for having us tonight. My name is Chris Wranglos. I'm a Planner One in Comprehensive Planning, and I help to coordinate the annual capital improvement program every year. Presenting with me tonight will be Kara Skinner. Kara is the Assistant Director in our Finance Department, and as you saw, we have many, many staff also on the call able and willing to answer any questions the board may have specifically to their department or any specific project. Quick rundown of the agenda. We'll start with a quick background and process overview. I know there's some newer members to the board, and so we'll spend a little bit of time providing that overview. We'll go through a financial overview, provide an analysis, do our SEEP project run-through, and then move into our next steps and staff recommendation. Before we jump in really to the CIP here, though, I just I wanted to share with the board what the key issues and really the role the planning board is tonight. Really, what it is, is that the board will be making a recommendation on the 2022 to 2027 CIP. Really, in looking at it, is it consistent with the policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan? Does the board have any recommendations on the scope, the priorities, and scheduling of any of the proposed projects? Does the board have any recommendations regarding any major policy issues raised by the location and design of our CIP projects? And finally, does the board have any recommendations on projects that should be required to undergo a community and environmental assessment process, which I'll provide some more information on here in just a bit? So what is a CIP project? We'll start kind of from the basics here. CIP projects are really major projects that are going to require the expenditure of public funds for the purchase, the construction, or the replacement of the fiscal assets of our community. Now, the six-year CIP is a comprehensive six-year plan for the capital investment in maintaining and enhancing our public infrastructure, essentially. It provides a forecast of funds available for capital projects, and it identifies all of our planned CIP projects and their estimated costs over a six-year period. Now prioritization of our CIP projects and their estimated costs over that six-year, I'm sorry, prioritization of our CIP projects involves the balancing of competing needs of the community, correcting things such as service deficiencies, enhancing our service levels across the board for the community as a whole, and providing services to new development when it does occur. I do want to point out, the first year's program in the CIP is what is adopted by the city council as part of the annual budget. Even though we're really only adopting the first year, in this case, 2022, the fiscal resources that we're appropriating the first year, again, is what we're appropriating, but the succeeding five years, the reason why it's a 2022 to 27 CIP are really important in taking that long-range perspective on what it is that we're proposing in the in the recommended CIP in those future or those out years. So how we break down the CIP, we break it down in a lot of different ways. We examine it in a lot of different ways, but really, the three main categories that we look at is by department, by project type, and by fund. The majority of our capital projects are going to fall into this capital maintenance and enhancement category, which is really demonstrating the investment that the city has in taking care of its existing assets. Bear with me on this slide. I'm not going to go through every single bullet point here, and certainly I don't expect others to either. Really, what this is, is this is all the funding sources that we have in the CIP. And again, the point isn't to go through every single one and talk about it, but really, to really kind of demonstrate the amount and complexity of the sources that do comprise annual CIP every year. So I wanted to take a little bit of time providing some planning context for CIP this year, and really how it fits into our citywide planning framework. So the diagram that you see to the left is one that many board members have probably seen. It's the umbrella diagram, as we refer it to, but it's really demonstrating the relationship between our sustainability and resilience framework, the BVCP, Department Master Plans, Sub-Community and Area Plans, and the Capital Improvement Program. As is the case with all city plans, we start with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, which is the overarching policy guide to development and preservation in the in the Boulder Valley, including for the city's capital improvement program. Okay, so from there, we take a look at Department Master Plans. This is where the majority of our capital projects are being identified by departments to be included in the six-year CIP. Most departments do have master plans outlining the provision of services and facilities. Master plans include a robust community engagement process and are developed to be consistent with the policies and the growth projections of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. They do include things such as service standards needed to meet those policies, more specific policies, and system-wide priorities for scheduling and targeting capital projects. With that, master plans play a really fundamental role in the in the identification and eventual implementation of our capital projects, which then in turn, the CIP is playing a very significant and fundamental role in achieving the vision set forth in both our Department Master Plans and the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. So the image to the far right is the sub-community and area planning map that we have in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. This is the other area where we identify capital projects. So like Department Master Plans, these do also play a fundamental role in the identification and eventual implementation of our CIP projects. In turn, the CIP is having the same effect as it does with Department Master Plans, and it is helping to achieve those visions set forth in our sub-community and area plans. So finally, as you can see, it's really these items, the sustainability and the resilience framework, the BVCP, our Department Master Plans, our sub-community and area plans that ultimately help to inform and lead to the annual capital improvement program that we put out every year. Now, just to touch a little bit more about the specific capital planning process and kind of how we get there. So to the diagram to the left shows what the general steps are in this process, and each department prioritizes, as I just mentioned, and schedules its CIP based on the needs and priorities that have been identified in the master plan by any sub-community or area, but there are other factors at play, such as industry, best practices, opportunities for external funding, estimated cost, projected revenue, urgency of the project, and maintenance schedules. Now, the diagram to the right is the same phases outlined, but it's really attempting to communicate the expectations for community engagement and overall level of detail throughout this process. So as you can see, phase one, which is the master planning level, is really where the community and our decision-makers have the highest amount of influence during the master during the master planning process as departments during this phase are identifying their priorities and the capital projects. So this is what our annual timeline looks like. And as you can see, we're we're kind of kicking things off early in February. And by May, we really have our first draft, and it's been submitted really for internal staff review. We have multiple different staff review teams, our PRT, as you see on schedule, and EBT. Our PRT is our peer review team, which is subset of upper-level staff from all of our departments, and then our executive budget team, which consists of most of our department directors. As you can see where we're at tonight, I'm in the timeline. We are at the planning board hearing, and we'll be quickly moving towards the first and second reading of the city council later this fall. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kara. Kara, once again, is our Assistant Finance Director, and she's going to provide the board just a bit of an overview on kind of where things are shaping out financially in the CIP this year.
Thanks, Chris. It's nice to see you all tonight. Thank you for having me. I just wanted, before I go on to the financial overview, give a huge shout out to Chris Wranglos. As you can see on one of his previous slides, this is a very involved and long process, and his leadership through it has been tremendous, and it's a huge asset to the Finance Department for him to take on that leadership role. So just really appreciate all his great work and the great work, of course, of all the departments and the financial folks and the project managers across the different departments. It's it's a it's a big project with a lot of great contributors. So with that, I think I'll go to the next slide. So I'm here to just give you a really high-level financial overview, and then really a high-level look at the funding plan is what I would really call it. So financial overview, a citywide big picture. I'm happy to say things are looking better. I was here last year to talk with many of you that were on the board at that time, and we were really in a tough place last year with the economic impact of COVID and all of the closures. So things have been improving. We had a number of revenue sources that were significantly impacted by the closures and the economic crisis that ensued. Sales and use tax, of course, was the primary one that was really impacted. Accommodations tax, of course, really collapsed as tourism and business travel collapsed. Parking revenue really took a hit with people not going downtown and coming into Boulder to work or visit retail and restaurants. And then, of course, our recreation programs were closed for much of the year, and so we've really had a huge impact revenue, but much of that is coming back. So that is the good news. So the second bullet, their revenue is recovering. Of course, we're not where we expected to be pre-pandemic. Right now, our 2021 end-of-year estimates for both the general fund, which is the largest funding source in the city, not for improvement program, but for general public services, and for sales and use tax, which is a revenue source that is a large one for the general fund, but then it also funds a number of dedicated funds that do fund many capital improvement projects, including open space and mountain parks and transportation and parks and recreation. So those those that the general fund and then sales and use tax are projected to be at about the 2019 level. So that's good news, but in essence, we sort of have lost two years. You know, in a normal situation, we would have expected growth over 2020 and 2021. So it's it's good news, but we're not back to where we thought we might have been. And just a reminder that last year, as part of the 2020 budget and the 2020 budget reductions in the 2021 budget, we did defer a number of capital projects as a budget-balancing strategy. Some of those projects that were deferred have been programmed back into the CIP. Some are still on hold. But that definitely was one of the strategies that the city employed. On the next few slides, I'm going to be going over the funding plans, but oh, sorry. We can go back to the next, the previous slide. Just big picture for 2022, it's $161 million planned, and over the six years, nearly 700 million. And just that last bullet point, I know Chris spoke about it, and he'll probably speak about it more, is that the majority of the dollars are allocated to capital maintenance and enhancement projects, so really a focus on taking care of what we have and improving the assets that we already have built. So these are sort of the funding plan charts. I have three for you. As Chris noted earlier, we we sort of slice and dice this three different ways. The first is by department to sort of show which departments are managing the different projects. And so you'll see by this funding plan, and the totals look the same across all charts, but for 2022 to 2024, those are large spending years, and that has been the plan. There are some large projects in each of those years. In 2022, it's a very large wastewater project. In 2023, it's a large facilities project, and then in 2024, it's a large stormwater flood project. So those are sort of extraordinary years. By fund, this looks very similar to the previous slide because the funds align with the departments in some instances. So you'll see in the blue that that is the utilities. And a large part of our capital improvement program is related to our utilities, and and that's probably not surprising, and you all are familiar with that, but the city does have a very large and complex water and wastewater system that is valued at over $2.3 billion. So it is takes a lot of investment year in and year out to maintain that system. So last, by project type, and this again speaks to the taking care of what we have. So the majority of the projects are capital maintenance and capital enhancement projects, and there's just smaller amounts of new facility or infrastructure or land acquisition, and then some capital planning studies. And then just to highlight the major capital projects for 2022, as I noted earlier, the third bullet, their main sewer improvements is the largest. But then also, we do have an important project for the Alpine-Balsam area, that flood mitigation. And then also, South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Phase One is one of the important projects. From 2023 to 2027, the two really big projects in 2023 is the Western City Hub development for $60 million. And then, of course, the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation in 2024 for $66 million. And the much-awaited Fire Station Number Three rebuild in 2023 for just over 10 million. So really important and exciting projects. With that, I'll hand it back over to Chris.
Thanks, Kara. Okay, getting down the stretch here. So again, just to remind the board, part of their role tonight is to evaluate CIP in the context of the policies of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan and our other city plans. So the following BVCP policies directly apply to the recommended CIP. Staff does find the recommended recommended CIP, carry out, maintain the general vision and policies set forth in the BVCP, including the policies that you see listed above of orderly and efficient provision of urban facilities and services. I did want to point out a couple of projects, BVCP Policy 2.4 Design Excellence for Public Projects. Every year, for a long time, we used to do a CIP planning board in city council tour where we would rent a bus and go out, and it was really fun to to visit all these different projects. And I remember just a few years ago, we were out at the Boulder Reservoir Center taking a look at what was there. I've not had a chance to go out and visit the new Boulder Reservoir Center, but I do encourage other planning board members and and folks in the community to do so as well. I know myself and many members of our community are really excited to see the North Boulder Branch Library come to fruition over the next several years. And then, as well as Fire Station Three, that Kara had just mentioned. My hope is the next year, we will be able to go out and do a planning board tour. Obviously, COVID-dependent, but hopefully, we'll be able to make that happen. I know that a lot of planning board members have appreciated that in the past. Okay, so I also wanted to take just a minute to provide the board with a few examples of specific projects that are implementing the vision set forth for in our sub-community and area plans, and this is not certainly a comprehensive list. There's many, but a couple that I wanted to point out in our North Boulder Sub-Community Plan, the North Broadway Reconstruction project that is currently under construction. Some of you have may have driven by this construction work already, but certainly two pictures at the bottom, if you haven't to take a look at. Two major projects implementing the vision of the Alpine-Balsam Area Plan, the Alpine-Balsam Flood Mitigation Project along Balsam, as well as the Western City Hub redevelopment, which includes the reuse of the medical pavilion. And then finally, the East Mapleton Ball Field renovations, not necessarily directly implementing the vision in the transit village area plan, but more so as a result of that area plan, we've seen an increase in dwelling units and people living in that area. And so see, certainly more of a demand for parks and recreation amenities in that area. Okay. Couple major policy issues here. We as staff do not We, as staff, do not identify any significant policy issues related to the design or location of any of our recommended projects. However, we did want to provide just a few examples of a key major projects, which will aim to reduce emissions. And this was also outlined in Attachment A to the meeting packet, if folks would like to go and view that as well. But a couple of example projects, Fire Station 3 will be a net-zero building, the North Boulder Branch Library, also net-zero, Alpine-Balsam Flood Mitigation and the Pavilion Reuse Projects that we just spoken about, and then multiple upgrades to our hydroelectric facilities. For equity impacts, many projects and department investment priorities will seek to reduce any disparities or marginalized or underserved groups. Couple of examples that I'd like to provide. The Broadband Fiber Backbone Project, which aims to address data connectivity challenges for underserved members of the community. Fire Station 3 will enhance the department's ability to respond to and conduct outreach to underserved populations living in North and Central Boulder. The North Boulder Library Branch will expand services to an area boulder that previously only had access to a 500-square-foot corner library. Several other projects, including large facilities, maintenance and upgrade projects, and then several parks and recreation facility maintenance and upgrades as well. Okay, so first SEEP, I'd mentioned that I'll spend a little bit of extra time on this this evening. And I just want to remind the board, again, this is part of the role in their purview on the CIP every year, is to identify which projects they want to recommend do undergo a SEEP. The purpose of a SEEP or a Community and Environmental Assessment Process is really to assess any potential impacts of conceptual project alternatives to eventually inform and the selection and refinement of a preferred alternative. It should be noted that a SEEP is one of three different processes that may be identified for a major capital project. Now, the other two and far more common processes that we see are concept plan and site review. Examples of those projects include Fire Station 3, the North Boulder Library Branch, and then, once again, the Boulder Reservoir Visitor Center, which I believe are three projects that this board has reviewed and provided input on. The second type that we see more often when it comes to these, the process that a capital project will go through is a project-specific community process and design. Two examples of this is South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation, as well as Alpine-Balsam Projects Flood Mitigation and Western City Hub redevelopment. To be clear, these types of projects typically have a project-specific design in public process already in place to identify community needs, concerns, and preferences efficiently and appropriately. These projects have been assessed through facility studies, area or facility planning processes, mitigation plans, or other studies, and therefore really do not undergo a SEEP. So with that, staff is recommending the following projects do undergo a SEEP. The Downtown Boulder Transit Station Improvements. This project will expand the number of bays along Canyon Boulevard and 14th Street and adjacent to the Downtown Boulder Transit Station. The Arapaho Multi-Use Path Enhancements Project will upgrade existing and missing sidewalk sections to a multi-use path along Arapaho between Foothills and Cherryville. It will also enhance the existing transit stops and access along that entire corridor. The Violet Neighborhood Park will provide capital funding to implement enhancements at Violet Park in North Boulder. And that will need to be realized to meet the service levels of the surrounding neighborhood. So once again, just service levels are increasing in that area. For these Mapleton Ball Field renovations, which I had mentioned a little bit previously, will also provide a recreation amenities such as playgrounds, dog parks, open lawn areas, and other multi-use amenities. So next steps and staff recommendation. I touched on this just a little bit earlier in the presentation, but taking a look at our timeline, what is left with the CIP is what you see in green, and that's a planning board hearing and recommendation this evening. And then on September 28th will be the budget-first reading with city council. And then on October 19th will be the second reading with city council. Okay, so with that, the staff recommendation this evening is that the planning board recommends to the city manager and city council the recommended 2022 to 2027 capital improvement program, including a list of CIP projects to undergo a community and environmental assessment process. I won't go through the key issues for discussion. This was discussed at the beginning of this presentation, but I did want to have it up on the screen for the discussion that we go through. And I think with that, that is going to be the last slide of the presentation, and we're happy to take questions. Once again, I'll kind of just leave this here for anybody who may need it.
Sorry, I had to mute there. Thank you so much, Chris and Cara for that wonderful presentation. I'm always humbled when we do the CIP every year at the amount of revenue that we're dealing with. $700 million is quite a large chunk of change for the next several years, and it's humbling to think about that. But it's always amazing to see the good work in the pipeline. And thanks for mentioning the CIP tour, by the way. There's also, not only that tour, but I think the Transportation Advisory Board does a bicycle tour. So there's been a couple of those every summer in the past, so I'm really hoping to get back to that. So I was thinking, I'll just put this by the board. Maybe the best way to do this is to just incorporate our questions into our key issues discussion and just collaborate with, you know, Chris and staff on each key issue in order. And that way, we can kind of organize our questions around the key issues and just have a dialogue leading to the, you know, to the recommendation. Are people comfortable with that? Great, okay. So should we leave this up? Can people see each other? Okay, I'll leave it up.
Yeah, I'm happy to also stop sharing too, if that's easier for folks.
I've got a big screen, but if anyone deals with screen real estate issues, we can certainly pull it down, and I'll.
You can slide the slider over too.
Yeah, there's a little slider usually that you can slide over and make it quite small on the left-hand side. And that way, you can see the faces better. If that works for everybody.
I'm looking for it here. One sec. I might just stop sharing here and actually just go back to this. I have a bit of an issue with the computer, it seems.
That's no problem.
Yeah, that works.
I can read the key issues as we go through them. So the first one is the recommended 2022-2027 CIP consistent with the policies of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. So let's just open up for questions and discussion.
David?
Yes.
Are you going to open it up for the public to see?
Yeah, how did I manage to skip that? Okay, I jumped the gun. Before we go into this, I had the wrong page in front of me. We need to do the public hearing. I apologize to the public for that. I didn't mean to skip over that. Sometimes I just get a little bit out of order. So now is the time that the public is welcome to address the board on this public hearing item, the CIP 2022-2027 CIP. And again, people will have three minutes to address the board, and Allison will be helping me with the public hearing. I see only a couple of people from the public on, so I'll look to see whether one of them, info@ecoarts, if you want to speak, you'll need to state your name. I don't see any hands. Lynn Segal has raised her hand, Allison, so if you'd be so kind as to enable her talking and start the clock.
Okay, one second. Get that timer up. Okay, Lynn, you should be able to unmute now.
Yeah, if my hand isn't raised, that means there's some kind of demise, and it's happened to me, just so you know. The Boulder Valley Comp Plan, it violates 1.1. Is that the number for jobs housing imbalance? You know, like, all of these projects that I mentioned earlier violate jobs housing imbalance. CU South is the elephant in the living room of jobs housing imbalance. And you know, you've got to you've got to really look in the rearview mirror like 50 years from now and think of what these decisions are doing. You know, Marpa House was a horrible decision, horrible. That was the best, the most hopeful type of housing this community could dream for. My brother lived there for nine years. It's like multi-generational, no cars, very few cars, you know, that everybody shares. Communal kitchen. All of that's being remodeled, communal kitchen. Seriously. It's nothing now. They don't even have a living room in those units. So they are going to go out and join the hill riots. This is what's going on with Boulder planning. This is so not okay. That is the model for housing you need to do at, guess where, Alpine-Balsam. That's what you need to do there. And Alpine-Balsam, guess what? There's no more TOD, right? We haven't got transit anymore, unless you want to dream that the virus is going to be over tomorrow, like you did last year. You know? Hey, hedge on that. But I say, the virus has taught us a lot of good things. A lot of integral good things, like Lynn here can go to three meetings in a night before I had to ride my bike from one to the next and the next and miss. There's a lot of good lessons, and one of them is living more tightly. You know, I'm not going to be able to support bedrooms for people. And you know why? Because the hill wasn't excluded. And the hill is what drives the craziness in this town, in every university town, that elevates the property values so that people like me can't have a cup of coffee, and I'm cranky at planning board meetings. You would be too if you hadn't had a cup of coffee in 10 years. You know? So let's make it so Lynn can buy a fucking cup of coffee, you know, and support these capital improvements because they're major libraries, rec centers. You know, what you need is integrative, seriously integrative planning with all the boards, like the eight that I follow and all of them. Done.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, well, I don't see any other hands at this point. So if we don't get any more hands, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item. And again, I apologize for almost going on to the wrong thing too fast. So with that, we'll go ahead and start the discussion around key issue one with questions for staff incorporated. Does anyone want to kick this off on how well the CIP is consistent with the policies in the BBCP? If I don't.
I think it's generally consistent. I'm fairly pleased and confident in the consistency.
Great. John?
Yes, I agree with Peter. I think it is generally consistent. I'll have some specifics later on, but generally, it is consistent, in my opinion.
Great. Lupita?
Yeah, I agree.
Excellent. And I'll just say, I was struck by a couple of things. One is the design excellence BBCP policy. I agree that those three examples are really outstanding outcomes from a design standpoint. And then I also was struck by the seeing how our area and sub-community planning really drives a lot of the CIP priorities, which is really integral to the BBCP. So I thought that was quite good. Anyone else want to make any comments on key issue one before we go on? No questions? Great, so key issue two then is, does the board have any recommendations on the scope priorities, scheduling of proposed CIP projects and unfunded needs? Sarah?
I'm not sure if this is the right question, the right moment to bring up this question. Or two questions, really. The first is about the expanded need for recreation space because of the growing population near Transit Village. And is there a lesson to be learned from that need that when we build new neighborhoods, whatever the density of those neighborhoods, that we should always make sure there's adequate green space available? Just strikes me that it's a great thing that that area is populating, but it is relatively sparsely. It's sparsely, there's not much green space. So I just wondering if there's a lesson to be captured there.
Go ahead, Jeff. I'll turn it over to Jeff Haley. Jeff's one of our managers from the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks for that question, Sarah. It's good to see you. And I'm Jeff Haley, Planning Manager with Parks and Rec. And, you know, I certainly agree with you, and that's actually one of the key projects we have. If I understand the question or the statement, clearly, that's one of the key projects we have within our Parks and Recreation Capital Plan with the East Mapleton Ball Field redevelopment. And to be succinct and brief, you know, the Transit Village Area Plan, you know, as we know, Boulder Junction kind of considered and evaluated those green space and park area needs within the area plan there. There is one park within, just right across from the depot, that we will be developing soon, within the next year or so. It's a very small, what we would consider like a pocket park. But then beyond that, we also have looked, and in fact, when you look into the area plan, Transit Village Area Plan, you'll see a diagram that looks at the relationship between or among the ball fields across the street at 30th and Mapleton, as well as Valmont City Park, which is farther to the east, all connected by the Goose Creek Bike Path there. So to answer your question, we do agree and see a need for more green space, community amenities, you know, parks and rec amenities. And so that's why we're looking at East Mapleton to basically revision that site. Right now, it's three ball fields. There's a small play area, playground. And what we'd like to do is convert that into a much more community park. And Chris actually mentioned it a bit in the presentation, where we'd have open lawns, kind of an events plaza area, more playground amenities for children, perhaps dog park, just a range of amenities that really serve a broad range of demographics and ages and interests and those sorts of things. So and then I would say, the last thing, we are in the midst of our master plan for the department, Parks and Recreation, and your general question or thought about density and the amount of park space for, you know, proximity for our residents, that's something we're certainly considering through that planning process. In fact, we just had a study session with council recently and really dove into that question a bit about how we continue to make sure we do have, even with our tight-knit community, how do we make sure our residents do have access to those areas? So hopefully that touches a little bit on your question, but.
It does. I appreciate that. And it's, you know, with the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, the same challenge. And I know the idea is that as the Valmont Park is renovated over time, that that will be a park access for people in what will become the East Boulder area, well, the expanded East Boulder area. But it does seem like that we have to make sure that we are budgeting for maintenance and upkeep and expansion and reimagining utilization as the population expands.
Yes, that's correct. You know, that's why Valmont City Park is so important. You know, when our community voted in taxes and measures many years ago to allow the acquisition of that land, and we've made development over the year. In fact, again, back to our current CIP that we're talking about this evening, we do have another phase of development within the park, I think, in '26. So yeah, it's a very important piece, again, as the community transforms and is, you know, reimagined and that sort of thing in the east area of town as well. Valmont will be so integral to really serve that part, that community, as well as the entire city. So and you touched on, you know, operations and maintenance. You'll see throughout our CIP document here and the memo that Chris prepared, where we really touch on how do we ensure that we're taking care of these spaces and the things we built? And that's really one of our key themes in Parks and Rec, among many of our city departments, is taking care of what we have. So. Is taking care of what we have. So. Uh, you know, that that that'll be important to ensure that we can provide, you know, the right upkeep and maintenance so that we don't get into backlog of. Disrepair and those sorts of things and and don't go beyond our means. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Georgie.
I I just had a a quick question, uh, Jeff, while you're still on, and maybe you're the right person to address this. I I remember I recall some discussion. At some point with city council over the past year or two. About trying to re-energize the underside of the main library downtown with a skate park or something like that. I don't see that on any of the plans. It's curious where that stands. It's more just a a question of curiosity.
Yeah, that's a great question and and I appreciate you checking in on that um and your interest in in those facilities. Yeah, the the library actually is part of our um. The well, quick answer is that project is actually funded and underway. Um, and so the context there was as we look at the downtown core and primary primarily the Boulder Creek Corridor. Uh, near the Civic Park and down to uh Ebenee G Fine Park to the west in those areas. Uh, we really want to ensure those are safe and welcoming spaces. We've had a lot of dialogue with city council about how we ensure that. Our community feels safe in those spaces that were uh definitely serving all our residents, um, but also. Uh, creating active, you know, spaces that people can use all all times of day. Um. You know, all different types of folks similar that I was just talking about with East Mapleton. So that project, uh, we actually just completed two new skate parks. Uh, at Valmont City Park and then also Howard Houston, which is a neighborhood park. And then that final piece is the underside of the library there. Um. And just to give a little specific context, south of the creek, um, just right as you go underneath there by the new play area that we did a few years ago. Is where we're looking to have a few features. Um, and again, this it's. We don't really refer to it as a skate park. We don't want people to think there's going to be big. Bowls and you know, a real elaborate. It's more of these features that would be. You know, a few people at a time could skate. Um. And you know, even nowadays, and and you guys might. Have children, scooters and roller skates and roller blade. There's many different people that use these areas. So it does just kind of. Extend that family focused area underneath the library. Um, but it will, that area will still provide some openness for a a variety of different. Events and activities that the library does under there as well. So. Anyway, sorry, it's a long answer, but that that is underway.
Clarification.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, John.
Yeah, uh, thanks. Uh, this is for Jeff also, uh. While you were here. Um. So you've probably been aware of the CU South plans that include some recreational and uh. Park-like uh uses. That uh CU is proposing, and I understand that they'll be. Done in cooperation with the city for some some part of that. And I'm just wondering how that. Those intentions are reflected in what we're dealing with tonight. The budget, how it's being budgeted for.
Um. So the the first answer is yes, we've been working closely with um. The planning staff to really look. Through the annexation agreement and all the the different documents that have been produced. To how we can really find a way to provide facilities. Um, in CU South that would serve the entire community. And you know, we've specifically mentioned a few different. Needs that we've seen uh within our residents, like a running track. You know, an actual track um. That we're we're actually short on tracks throughout the community. Uh, dog parks, again, you know, playgrounds and just kind of those family focused uh park amenities. Um, as well as just walking paths and connections to our other parks. So. We have been working on that. I'll say to answer your question directly. Our current CIP does not reflect uh funding. Um, to make that happen in terms of the financial partnership. Um, I think as we move forward with CU and continue to look at. Um, realizing the implementation of those different features and amenities. You know, we would get into more detail and understanding of. Who's paying for what and and the schedule for improvements and that sort of thing. But. I guess the best, um, and in fact, some of the planning staff that are on the the meeting this evening might have. Better information about moving to implementation, but. The best response I can give is that we have certainly coordinated a variety of different. Parks and Rec type amenities, like I said, dog park, running track. Playground, open lawns and those sorts of things that um CU has certainly discussed as something they would like to see out there as well. If that helps.
Well, I I understand it sounds like a statement of good intentions that is not. Budgeted for in any way in the next. Five or six years, if I understand correctly.
Not not at this time within our capital budget.
Okay, well, thank you.
Chris, did you want to add some?
Yeah, John, I think we're just a little bit early on this. I think um. You know, you may start seeing some projects to kind of depending on what that final annexation agreement looks like. Um, you may start to see some of those projects, say, I don't know, 23 to 28, 24 to 29 CIP. Um, I think we're just a little bit early on on really being able to to have a funding source and to know exactly what those projects are going to be and what we are going to be contributing to. Um, to really have those in the in the CIP at this point right now, but you'll see it soon, I would imagine.
Well, if if I can just respond, I I understand that the annexation has not yet. Taken place or been approved, or the agreement hasn't been. Finally formulated, but given the timetables that are discussed for the use of the recreational and. Uh, public areas. Uh, over the next four or five years, it. I'm I have to say that I'm a little bit surprised that there hasn't been any attempt to budget for that in. In a capital improvement plan that is supposed to cover that. Area or that uh time period, but I I appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, go ahead.
Uh, on the same topic of CU South, I noticed um that. You have land acquisition costs in the um six-year CIP, I mean, projected six-year CIP. But I didn't. I couldn't tell if. Uh, projected cost, land acquisition costs included the possible. Uh, purchase of open space. Other land, um, and maybe the same answer that Chris just gave to John will be given to me that. We don't know yet, but I'm just sort of curious from a process perspective, when when might the CIP start to reflect the cost of purchasing that open space land?
Kara, that might be a a better question for you or someone from our um. Open Space and Mountain Parks team. Looks like Samantha might be coming on.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Sam McQueen. I'm from OSMP. Um, to answer your question, we do program acquisition funds in our CIP every year. Um, the funds have not been specifically programmed similar to the answer you received for the previous question. Uh, in the 2022 CIP. But it is something we will look at for future years if there's a specific acquisition planned.
So can I just ask a follow-up? Is that all right? Um. Let's just, I I I I'm sort of curious, and this may be above the outside the boundaries of the CIP conversation. So. Tell me if we have, if that's not the right place for this, but. Um. The. The. It seemed like in the conversations that we did have about CU South that. There was going to, that was the intention of the city to purchase some of that land. Um, so how would that? Not so much if it is planned, but when, I mean, maybe I'm just quibbling over the if or when. So how is that decision? Made? Is it a decision driven by? Financing or is it a decision driven in by some other factors?
And some of our planning staff may want to jump in on this piece too. Um, in terms of acquisition, we. Do uh rely on input from a few different places. We always have a public process. Um, if there is a piece that. Immediately impacts the public. I'm speaking more generally here. Uh, our board weighs in and we also look at guidance from city council. So. In terms of when we would program that in, it would be when we. When we receive official guidance through an acquisition plan, so the CU South annexation, for instance, um, and when that's. Fully baked, we would uh start to plan for it in our CIP.
Okay, I appreciate that answer. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Great. Well, maybe I'll um go ahead and um, are there any other CU South related questions that people had? If not, I'll call on myself and ask a transportation related question. Um, there is a lot of community interest in uh the 30th Street Corridor, uh, because uh. Uh, as we know, the bike lanes are a little unprotected along 30th Street. And um, I was involved um a little over three years ago with a corridor study uh baseline to Pearl on 30th Street. Um, so um, I just wonder, um, I this since this wasn't part of an area planner, sub community plan, um, if there's a, you know. What mechanisms might see that get prioritized? And I know it may not be at a point where it has. Raised, been raised to the level of prioritization, uh, but um, but it is something that I keep looking for in the CIP. So I figured I'd ask about that. And I see that Garrett has joined us.
Yes, Garrett Slater, Principal Transportation Projects Engineer with the Transportation and Mobility Department. Uh, so you should actually see the 30th Street Separated Bike Lanes Project in the CIP. Uh, but I believe it shows up in the Transportation Development Fund and not in the Transportation Fund.
Oh.
And and so uh just a a little bit of uh context for those that aren't aware, a few years ago, the Transportation Division at that time. Uh, conducted a study of 30th and Colorado corridors uh together and uh. That concluded in a series of recommendations for the the corridors uh from Colorado uh for Colorado between Folsom and Foothills Parkway and for 30th Street between Baseline and Arapahoe. And so there is uh the one of the first projects underway in that quarter currently, the underpass at 30th and Colorado. Which will also be a build the first uh surface protected, fully protected intersection in the city. And then the project which shows up uh for 30th Street Separated Bike Lanes in the Transportation Development Fund summary. Uh, it is funded by, in large part by uh two grants, one from the Transportation Improvement Program through the Denver Regional Council of Governments, also known as Dr. Cog. And as well, the uh safer Main Streets grant opportunity that came through Dr. Cog, as well as the Colorado Department of Transportation and and CDOT. So. We merged both of those grants together to be able to build separated bike lanes, which will go from the north edge of the underpass project to just south of Arapahoe. And um, so that is one uh set of projects on 30th Street and. Uh, I'm happy to share some news that does not show up in the CIP, but just yesterday, uh, we learned that uh the uh our partners at CDOT have identified funding. For us to be able to uh carry forward preliminary and final engineering as well as potentially right away acquisition. Or improvements to the 30th and uh Arapahoe intersection. So uh potentially the uh the the planets and stars might align for us to be able to move forward with the intersection project. Uh, uh, just as we're finishing the uh the 30th Street Separated Project between um, between Colorado and Arapahoe. So that's the the progress update there. And just I'll I'll quickly note that on Colorado uh corridor that uh we also received safer Main Streets funding to be able to do the 28th and Colorado project, which does show up under the Transportation Fund.
Great. Oh, thank you so much for that update. And yes, um, my Garrett, I should have mentioned that I did see that the segment uh near the underpass. I did see that funded, which is great. So it's it's wonderful to hear that additional. Parts of that will uh will be uh appearing soon. So. Uh, great. All right. Any other transportation related uh questions while we have dirt on? Okay, any others, John?
Yeah, I I have a another question regarding the s- the scheduling and budgeting uh aspects that concerns both transportation and. Other departments and utilities. Um, that is on CU South. I I'm just looking at the. At the scheduling uh which uh shows a a huge uh. Expense projected for 2024, which I presume is a a lot of construction and excavation. Um, but. Is it really expected to use that entire $66 million in one year or? Wouldn't wouldn't one anticipate that being spread out over several years? Or is construction going to be moving a lot faster than I've ever heard of before?
John, that's probably not the um a question for Garrett, I don't think. Um, if there's someone from our utility staff, Chris DuVille or Kevin, who may be able to jump in on that, that'd be, that's great.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Chris DuVille, I'm the Deputy Director of Operations for Utilities. So I I just have one thing to share, John, that uh I believe is the truth here is when when our large bond. Efforts show up, we just put them on the single year that they're bonded for. So this represents that first outlay of construction costs. You're absolutely correct in that that the entirety of the project would not be accomplished in one year. But this represents um. The bonding effort and the bond, the bond money coming in.
Thank you. That that's a, I I think that's always a challenge for us planning board members when we look at these, sometimes the way things line up don't always match our uh in intuition. So we appreciate those explanations. All right. Good uh, good, good questions. Any more questions then on prioritization? Key issue two, I'll just say that I was um impressed to see uh Vision Zero data informing projects, things like the signals at Baseline and Broadway, Baseline Mohawk, Folsom Pine. Um, I think that it's uh. It's always great to see that our Vision Zero. Uh, goals are are informing uh. Some of these important capital improvements. So. Kudos on that. All right, well, let's go ahead then and move to our third key issue, which is, does the board have any recommendations regarding policy issues raised by the proposed location and design of CIP projects? And I'll just go ahead and then Chris and um I sent out an email earlier today. Uh, uh, with some historical um things, you know, some historical language that uh gosh, for several years on planning board, we've uh. We've added to our motion that we're sent letters to city council uh asking that we consider directing CIP dollars towards procurement from and contracting with local businesses, minority owned businesses, women owned businesses and disadvantaged business enterprises. And um, we do, we've been doing that for years. I don't know if city councils had a big discussion of that or if that does show up somewhere that we're just not aware of. So. Uh, I thought maybe we could get an update on that.
Thanks, Kara Skinner here from CIP.
Kara.
I apologize, I meant to um speak to that in my presentation and and skipped right on by it, but um. We did want to share an update with you all with regard to um. The prior recommendations um. And procurement practices specifically related to um inclusiveness. And the purchasing team has done a lot of work this last year and they did share some of those specifics with me, so I'll share them with you. Um, and that they have done a lot of research with regard to disadvantaged business programs. From various municipalities across the US to benchmark and really better understand and design the city's program. And they have completed a draft of a proposed underserved business program for the city of Boulder. Um, and it does outline a number of activities to promote engagement with the underserved business community and to include their status as. Um, in evaluations to determine awards and that that. Um, underserved business program is under review right now by city leadership, but it is planned to be moving forward. Um, and then for council discussion. Also, just wanted to note that in the past year, uh, purchasing has implemented a methodology. To track that data and and capture that from Ben, from vendors. So we do have a way now for vendors to self identify their status. Um, and can report on those metrics. And so that's, I think we've made really good progress toward that in this last year and we expect that to pretty much culminate and really kick off in the coming year.
Excellent. Well, that's good to hear. Um, I wonder if it um. Is there um a possibility for a planning board, since we've had such an interest in this to request a matters update at some point when that gets finalized? I don't know if it's part of what planning board would normally see, but we would love to hear the outcome of this plan. Uh, once it's it's finalized. So is that something we could just kind of? At least ask here and hopefully keep tabs on.
David, we can, we can commit to giving you guys an update on that for sure.
That would be awesome. Great, because I I know it is kind of a legacy of Harmon. He would bring it up every year and we always put it in our motion. So I, because I just, I think it's great to.
It wouldn't be the CIP without it. So thanks for bringing it up.
Absolutely. Great. Uh, and I, of course, um, there is a lot of uh of wonderful uh language in the CIP uh across all departments. Great. And I, of course, there is a lot of wonderful language in the CIP across all departments with regards to applying the equity lens to projects. So that's great to see. Good. Other questions or comments and key issue two? Hi, John.
Yeah, thanks. I, I have to confess is this may be a flaw in my work in preparing, preparing for this meeting, but I was looking for where the Alpine Balsam budgeting shows up. And I didn't see it. And so Chris, maybe you can point me to it and, and see where I went wrong.
Are you referring to the flood mitigation project or the pavilion reuse redevelopment of Alpine Balls?
The general development, including the pavilion reuse.
Sure, sure. So that project we actually discovered just a little bit before the meeting was not included in the facilities department overview. So we don't have a description for that project. There is a description in the staff memo that was submitted. It is a big project. It's a $60 million project. That project was included in all of our funding summaries. So it is included in that total amount for both 2022 and the out years. That's just something that we, it was a technical error on the back end of the CIP. We'll get that project included, including the description for, for first reading with city council.
So, so you're not asking us for our thoughts on that topic then?
We can certainly discuss that project, no problem. I just, it was a technical issue that it didn't find its way into the CIP, but it will be a part of the recommended CIP to city council. So we're more than happy to, to discuss any elements of that project.
Well, I, I don't know if you have just some quick and dirty spreadsheet where you can show us the information that was left out of what we're dealing with.
Sure, I'm, I'll pull that.
Interested to see that.
Sure. I can pull it up here. In the meantime, I may just have someone from our facilities department get on and provide a bit of an overview on kind of where that project is at and what the overall timeframe is. But what I will do is in the meantime, pull up that project sheet if I can find it right now and then share it with the board.
Thank you.
That takes, we could entertain another question. It's gonna take a bit or we could, it's like.
It looks like Joanna.
Yeah. Sorry. Hi, I'm Joanna Kreen. I'm the Director of Facilities and Fleet, but it's funny. I actually was just scrolling through the document and realizing it wasn't there. So I don't have it in front of me. So if you want to jump to another question, then we can get back to it. Sorry about that.
Okay. Well, Chris is looking that up. Let's go ahead and entertain any other questions on policy issues that the board may have, any policy issues by the proposed location and design of CIP projects. Sarah.
So I have a question that's less about policy and more about financing. I noticed that the, there's an upcoming city council hearing or study session on the utilization of federal funds that are going to be made, that will be made available through the Recovery Act and maybe through other. Sorry, I'm just blanking on the name of the, the infrastructure bill. But, and I'm wondering how much of the, how much of, how much of that known federal dollar amount is incorporated into the budget that was, the CIP budget that's sort of, that's laid out for the next six years? Is, is that, is that number reflected or is that yet to be added is really my question?
Kara, do you want to take that one?
Hi, I actually do see Mark Wolf is also on the call and he's really been leading our ARPA funding and gathering everything from departments. I don't know, Mark, if you want to share some thoughts first?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Kara. Just briefly, it is not programmed. So our federal, local allocation for, for the, the ARPA dollars are not programmed within the CIP. We are set to discuss this with council on next Tuesday, where we'll be recommending, recommending some short term use of the funding, the, the bulk of which will be holding back for a little bit more planning and coordination and making sure that we're accessing not just our local relief dollars, but you point out the infrastructure bill and making sure that we're really maximizing the use of the dollars that are available out there. So we are not currently programmed in the CIP. It doesn't mean that it couldn't be utilized for some infrastructure projects that are eligible, but there's still a little bit more planning to be done and a conversation coming up with council.
I, can I just make a pitch for spending some of that money on maintaining open space in mountain parks? We have a big backlog there and not enough money. Just making, making a little pitch there for utilizing some of those funds.
Thanks for that.
Hey Dave, I do have the Western City Hub redevelopment project up. I think I'm just going to share it with on the screen if that's okay.
That would be great. Thank you, Chris.
Sarah's comment, and there's a moment.
Yeah, why don't we finish up that question while that's coming up with Mark on, on the emergency funding. Peter?
Sarah, you brought up the OSMP budget. I've had a question and if it's in the packet, I apologize. What is the OSMP budget right now? Does the staff have that answer?
So the CIP proposal for 2022 is 3.57 million.
Then what is OSMP's annual budget last year?
So last year was about, I'm just pulling up our numbers. Our 2021 number was about 28 million and we're proposing for 2022 CIP and overall a little over 30 million.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and pull this up now.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, are we seeing the project description?
Yes.
So I'm happy to speak to it if that would be helpful. Again, I'm Joanna Kreen again. Sorry.
Yeah, thanks.
Facilities and Fleet.
That would be great, John. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I realize it's hard to probably read that on the screen and, and we're so sorry. Not until, actually Chris was starting to talk. Did I realize it wasn't in the document? Cause I was scrolling for it. So as some of you may be aware, we purchased the Boulder Community Health Site at Alpine Balsam in 2015. And so going forward, we developed a vision plan for the site and then ultimately an area plan was adopted in fall of 2019. So we've been moving forward with some of the work on the site. And that has involved a number of different things, but one of those things have included the, some of the work related to flood mitigation that is called out specifically in the CIP. And some of that actually has been quite a lengthy process in conversation with alternatives analysis and other work that was done. It also relates to the Goose Creek Master Plan that's also been in progress that utilities has been working through. And so some of that work again is part of what you're seeing in the document on the screen before you. That part was captured. What was missing was this Western City Hub redevelopment piece, which relates to the Alpine Balsam, the rest of the site. And specifically talks about the pavilion, medical office pavilion, which is working to be redeveloped. That actually was evaluated in terms of reuse. I'm forgetting the exact year, but it was a couple of years ago that we did a reuse study of that. And then that again was part of the conversation with community council, planning board as part of the area plan conversation as well as obviously there's more work to be done on the building itself. And that's where we will be coming through the concept, plan and site review process that would obviously normally happen. And we've also been involved both actually related to the flood mitigation, which that work has to happen before we can do some of this other work. And the pavilion is submitted a condition letter of revision for, to FEMA, which is referred to as CLOMER for the approval of actually some of that work to proceed. So I don't know if that's helpful in terms of some high level understanding of some of the detail that you actually have on your screen right here.
So Kara, does that, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Joanna, does that mean that the, the totals will be increased by the 63 million that is on that? Was that not taken into account in the overall numbers that we saw for 2022 to 2027? I mean, it'll increase the overall numbers or were those numbers in there? They just weren't listed?
The numbers were included in those.
The summary, okay.
It's just the detail that inadvertently left out of the funding summary for, under the Facilities and Fleet section. So.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't very eloquent on that question. Sarah?
So I, I had to put on my glasses to, to read the, to read the description. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding. It said, it read that there might be construction delays as that, as it said. If I was reading it correctly, it said there might be some construction delays because of COVID and, and high cost of construction that might raise, and there might be some deconstruction of the Renton Building. So is, did I read that correctly that there might be some delays?
There have been some delays, just like most projects. But we are back on track in terms of the work. Actually, some of it worked out well, frankly, in terms of the delay. I guess if you want to frame it that way, just because some of the work we needed to do as part of the flood mitigation and the CLOMER process and the environmental assessment that had to happen prior to all that work. So it worked out well. We had originally, we had originally thought some of those things would be happening concurrently. It actually kind of got spaced out, but it turned out to be okay in terms of some of that timing.
Okay. So the reason I was asking is I'm trying to understand what the sequencing of the $60 million Western City Hub project, which is not what I, I didn't know that's what it was called. And the sequencing of the residential developments. That 66 million is only about the city buildings. Is that correct?
It is right now only yes, on the city portion of the redevelopment. Some of that may include some of the infrastructure improvements. Again, some of that is nuanced, but no, it does not relate to the housing portion of the site.
So that, so the city portion of the site can funk, can move forward at its own pace and the residential portion can move forward at its own pace?
Yes. I mean, there is interconnection there, which is why some of this environmental flood mitigation work was important to, to front end. But, but yes, essentially they can move at different paces.
Okay, great. I, I thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else on key issue three that we should discuss? I'll just add a little feedback, but it's always great to see how our climate action plan is being addressed through climate analysis on, on all of the different projects. So kudos for that. I think it informs the prioritization really well. So with that, let's go on to key issue number four. Now, I don't know how long we're going to be talking about the SEEP. We could take a break or we could try to finish this agenda item. Are people okay pushing forward and talking about SEEP and seeing if we're ready? Okay. Great. I see mostly thumbs up. So the next one is, does the board have any recommendation on the CIP projects that will be required to undergo community and environmental assessment process? See? Anyone want to weigh in on this one? John?
Yes, thanks. I, I think the list that has been presented is, is good, but I think it's not complete as it should be. In particular, I think that it would be especially relevant to have that process be used both for Alpine Balsam developments, which, which have been a matter of concern for a lot of the neighborhoods in the vicinity. And CU South, which are of, which is, these are the two largest projects that the city has going on. And I, I think it seems obvious to me that, that this process should be used for them as well.
Chris, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. Thanks, John, for the comment. I think what I'll say about both of those projects, John, is that these two projects really fall into that category of project specific community processes and designs that we have. So examples include, you know, and, and this is the case for both Alpine Balsam and for, for the CU South flood mitigation work is that those have been studied through various facility in all different alternatives, different mitigation plans already. The community process that has been used for both Alpine Balsam and for CU South goes well above and beyond what we would require in a SEEP anyways. So those two projects are really good examples of projects that don't quite fit that concept site plan category, but they certainly do require a very specific community process. It's going to look at all of those alternative analysis anyways. And so really at this point, all that it would be doing is taking information that we already have and already know and putting that SEEP document together. There's nothing that is required in a SEEP that would go above and beyond what we've already done for those projects. Hopefully that helps to answer your question on those two specifically. I know that certainly we do have people from both our facilities and utilities department who may be able to chime in. But that's really the reason why our staff felt like those two projects in particular would not benefit from moving forward with the SEEP process.
Well, thank you for your thoughts. I, I think that it'll be interesting to hear what my colleagues think on planning board, because it's not obvious to me, but I presume that's a, something we'll discuss later this evening.
Well, actually we're, we're discussing and doing questions at the same time. So we can open this up for discussion. repeated, did you have a comment?
Yeah. So just to be clear, then, and going to the reasoning, it is then that if you decide to take those two projects, either the SEEP list is because they will undergo a much more extensive process outside it. But there will be no missing pieces that could be addressed only under the CIP and not under this other independent review. Just to make sure, because I, I understand and I agree with John about his concerns. So just to make sure that that is clear, if, I mean, if that, am I interpreting that right or no?
Yeah, well, and I, I don't think that there's anything in a SEEP process that we would require that's going to be any more extensive than the work that's already been done on those two projects. And, and really at the end of the day, that's the biggest reason that we've identified the need not to pursue SEPs on these projects. There's nothing, there's no added benefit to it really, other than the fact that we would simply be replacing material that we've already studied and analyzed, taking community feedback that we've already received to ultimately likely come up with the same alternative at the end of the day.
So I'm, I'll just, okay, before I call on you, John, I'll just weigh in on this. This is at least the third year that we've discussed this and we've gotten the same answer each time. The, I am convinced that if we were to ask for a SEEP on something that's undergoing an extensive site review or process or, or area, area plan process that leads to a site review, that we would be adding costs for no benefit because it is a subset of what's already being done. And I'm, when I, and I'm willing to accept that answer because we've been given that every time we've asked the question. But I'll just leave it at that. John, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I also remember that we've dealt with this several times previously and had that same answer from staff, but I don't come to the same conclusion. I, I believe that based on my understanding of the work that's been done, that there are a number of issues that have not been adequately addressed that should be. And it seems to me that this is the process by which planning board can ensure that it does take place. And if, if the work has already, if staff feels that the work has already been done, then that's not something that, that I agree with. Particularly with respect to the interaction with the neighborhoods most directly affected by both of these projects. So I, I appreciate staff's response. I understand that this has been the response for the last several years. And I would like to make the point that I don't think that it is, I, I disagree with it and think that we should move ahead with these, with this extra process.
Sarah?
Can I ask for a clarification? What, this is actually from John for discussion. What is the, what is the additional information that you feel a SEEP would produce? I just am really eager to hear.
Well, for the Alpine-Balsam project, for example, we've all received lots of emails from the, from the neighborhood, evincing concern both about the bulk and height and the parking aspects of, of the project. Now, I don't mean to say that I oppose the project on those bases, but I think that it's far from clear to me that there's been a clear and explicit discussion with the neighborhood about what will actually happen and what is actually being proposed. I understand that there has been a lot of work that staff has done in developing this project, and we have, we have reviewed it several, at several stages, but I don't think the work with the neighborhood has been adequately done, and their, their input has not been adequately considered.
Can I, can I just stay in conversation with you for a moment, John? So the, what I think what I'm hearing is that the, the fact that this is a form-based, this project has been proposed as a form-based code, by the time it comes to us in site review, in some ways, the, you're, you're suggesting that the die will already have been cast, and the set, and there won't be a ton of input that the pub, that the public input won't have, there won't be much for the public. We'll get a lot of public input, but there won't necessarily be space for revisions. Is that essentially, am I understanding sort of what you're saying?
Yes, I, that is my concern.
Okay. So may so, so I, I do think that the, that I, I was not aware until, I don't know, six months ago, that it was going to be, that the cit, the city had determined that this was going to be a form-based code project, and there may be very, very good reasons for doing that. But it, it is a decision, I don't think it was made in conjunction with Planning Board or the City Council. I don't, I don't know. Let me ask that question. Was that decision made in conjunction with City Council?
Wait a minute, I'm getting confused here. We're, we're now moving into this form-based code thing, so are we asking Chris?
The question, here's the question I'm asking, David, just to clarify. So what I'm hearing John say is that he'd like to propose, he's, he'd like us to talk about whether there should be a, a SEEP for Alpine-Balsam. And the question I raised was, is part of the issue for John, that it's a form-based code project, and therefore the site review will be its own, it'll be a site review project. We'll get it to site review, but it'll already be sort of, a lot of the work will have been done by staff to get a complete form-based code proposal pulled together. And so my, my one little question is, who, how was it determined for staff that this would be a form-based code project versus a different kind of a site review project? A project that we would see in site review. I, I'm just trying to understand how that happened.
Would that be a question for Chris rather than John? I think it's nice to, you know, let staff weigh in on the projects in that way.
And let staff respond here.
And maybe, and maybe also whether there's a difference with form-based in terms of whether SEEP requirements would be built into the process. Thank you.
And I'll have Joanna help me out with this one too. But for the area planning process that we went through, specific to Alpine-Balsam, there was a lot of community engagement that had occurred with that project in particular, that I think certainly is going to meet the criteria that we would have put forth in the SEEP process regardless. And then Sarah, your, your last question, remind me exactly, again, what the last question was?
It's a question about the form-based code.
Sure, okay. So the form-based code, as far as, like, at what point that kind of became a thing, came to fruition, and that really, again, was through the Alpine-Balsam area planning process. It has always been a conversation that we may be looking to do a form-based code at that particular location. It was going to be more of a test of a pilot of a form-based code at this particular location. And so that decision was made and presented to both the Planning Board and City Council during the area planning process. And since then, we've been, I, I believe I'm not no longer a part of that project, but working towards that form-based code soon, or if not already. So it was a decision that was made during the area planning process.
Okay, so it was, it was approved by a previous Planning Board and Council?
That's correct, yeah.
And
And we will be getting an update on Alpine-Balsam very soon, by the way.
No, I understand, but I'm, I'm just trying to hook it back to the question about a SEEP, because when you do, when you do form-based code, it's very technical, right? And it's very heavily driven by staff, which is great, but it, it does mean that there's there's not a ton of public input. And I think that's the point John's bringing up is, should there be an opportunity for public input on the form-based code outputs or out, or design itself? That's what I think you're saying, John, is that correct?
That's correct.
And there will be, I know that there's additional engagement anticipated this fall for Alpine-Balsam specifically, and so that will certainly be, there'll be many additional conversations with the community as it relates to a form-based code at that specific location. They was not just limited to the area planning process.
And so I've never gone through a, a public process with form-based code, because the last time we did this was Transit Village. How, what impact can the public have, or what input can the public have on something as, as complex as form-based code?
That's a bit of a difficult question for me to answer, and a little bit outside of the scope of CIP. But I, I can say that we are always committed to finding ways to engage the community, no matter how difficult that may seem for such a technical type of project such as form-based code. I do know in the development of the form-based code for the, form-based code for the Boulder Junction area, there was several engagement activities that did occur with the community in developing that form-based code. And so I see no reason why we wouldn't be able to also pursue the exact same thing and even improve upon what we've done in the past. But again, it's a little bit outside, outside of the scope of the CIP. I, I understand kind of where it's coming from in context of, of needing to potentially identify a SEEP for this project, certainly. But form-based code is one of those things that, that we will always find a way to engage our community with.
Would, would you say that there's anything inherent in the form-based code process that would make a, a project less likely to go through the types of rigorous examination that a SEEP would, would also do?
I mean, Not really, no. I don't, I don't see any sort of correlation between the, the two.
I, I have to say that I, I disagree. I, I don't oppose form-based code, you know, as such. But I do think that having a form-based code means that it carries more weight, that the neighbors' comments and requests for revisions in a proposed project will carry less weight if, if the project proponent is using, is basing their argument on a form-based code process as the basis for why they want to move ahead with the form that they have, that is being proposed. So inherently, less responsive to neighborhood concerns. That doesn't mean it should be, you know, thrown out, but I think this is why we need to do a SEEP as proposed.
Okay, we're kind of getting a little bit repetitive here, but Peter?
Just to make sure I understand it, that the SEEP process will provide more input than the form-based code input process that we've just heard the city or are we just layering on top of?
That's not, that's not what city staff said, right?
Well, essentially, it would be, I mean, the, the degree of involvement that would happen either through a SEEP or through the form-based code, in my opinion, is going to be very similar. It's going to be an engagement effort that is directly geared towards understanding what the future of this site could look like in the alternatives. Again, I do want to remind the board that we have gone through and vetted several different alternatives for this site with the community. But as far as, as the form-based code goes, doing a SEEP process, the, the two engagement efforts that would happen in a SEEP process versus what we intend to have happen with form-based code process would be no different.
Thank you, that was what I was trying to hear.
And just for one point of clarification, and I appreciate John's comment about maybe not everyone's concerns were addressed. We have, for Alpine-Balsam, been in a public process for five years. So it is not that we haven't had conversations and that we haven't had opportunity for input all along this time. So I just wanted to share, just because maybe not everyone's aware of that.
So let's, you know, are there any other projects that people want to talk about with regards to SEEP? And just so it's clear, we were incorporating, you know, discussion into our question and answer. So hopefully, people feel like we've been, in each of our key issues, been able to not only answer questions, but also get opinions heard.
Well, just to remind you, I did propose it for the CU South process also.
Okay.
Obviously, it's a different situation with different specifics, but I feel it would be appropriate there as well.
Well, with that, um
I just, I, I think I just really need to understand what a SEEP process actually is, like, what would it look like? Because I'm not trying to layer on work, I'm just trying to understand, like, what actually it looks like.
Sure, yeah, so it's, it's a large study. They end up being about a hundred and fifty to two-hundred-page documents, really documenting all of the different alternatives that were considered for that project. It's going to include any kind of summary of a public process that we had engaged in with the community on, on a particular project. And then there's typically some sort of assessment at the end, a checklist of items to ensure that all components have been accurately addressed or considered in the, the alternatives. It's really, really intended for any project that has multiple altern, alternatives to really ensure that, one, the community process happens, which for most of our capital projects nowadays, there is a community process happening already. But, but really, just to ensure that all possible alternatives are being considered and working with the community, we're able to come to a preferred alternative that we can move forward with. That's sort of the end result of a SEEP. There's many small components of it, documentation of specific items that, that would also be included. And that's where we kind of get into the hundred and fifty to two-hundred-page-length document to really document, really, everything that we need to in a SEEP.
So I'll just ask this, I, you know, you're a straw poll. Are, how many people feel strongly that we should be looking at adding non-SEPs to projects like Alpine-Balsam and CU South that already have an extensive site review and process built into them? Are there other people besides John who feel strongly that we should be asking for that?
I, I am, I appreciate, I guess I don't know, and I don't have an answer to that, but I, I am interested in and curious about the public input processes that will go with this form-based code proposal. And I, and this, this may not be the right place to say that, but I think for me, that is, that's something I am, I'd like to know more about, and that this may not be the time to do it, or this may be the time to do it, but
I think, I think the form-based, we're going to get into in great detail. I think it's in an October Planning Board meeting coming up, we're going to get a full update on Alpine-Balsam. So we'll get, we'll be able to dig into that in great detail.
Right, so let me ask, then let me ask a follow-up question then. At that meeting, it's not a site review meeting in October, it's a, is it, is it a site review or is it something else?
I, I think it's area plan. I don't know if it's full approval, Cindy, do you know, if, if a recommendation to council?
I'm going to take a look right now.
Hello, can probably help us with what we're going to be deciding that night. I have to admit, it's too far in the future for having, me having gone to see what our actions are going to be.
It's actually proposed form-based code for that area that will be reviewed. So the standards for the area will be reviewed by the board with the public hearing.
It's actually our next, it's our next meeting, September second.
And Oh, so it's coming up pretty quick.
And are we going to be asked to approve or just give feedback?
You're asked to make a recommendation.
Well, so that sounds like there's not a ton of time for public input, like, I'm not really, that, that does sound like, I mean, I, I hear Chris saying that there's going to be public input, but the public input's going to come after the Planning Board has made recommendations. So, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm thinking of recommendations me, as a def, defining it differently than defining it to, to too stringently. Is it recommendations like CU South recommendations, or is it recommendations like we're going to approve a motion?
It would be a motion, what we would ask you to do would be a motion to make a recommendation on the adoption of a form-based code for the area. It's not a project, it's to create the form-based code standards for the area that don't exist today.
So they, it's a, it's a subset of all the other moving parts that have had approval checkpoints, right?
So to John's point, then, it does mean that there, the, by the time, when the public engages, we will have already given a, a vote, one way or the other, on moving forward with a specific form-based code. So I do think, maybe, I don't know if SEPs the right thing, but it does seem like we need more public input to respond to the proposed form-based code before it comes to us. Just, that's just a thought. That, and that may be the SEEP process.
I would say that, that captures my concern very clearly. The, the, there will be very little opportunity for public comment on the proposed form-based code before we make a recommendation. And presumably, City Council, you know, acts on it in one way or another. So I, I, this, you're, you're capturing my concern very well.
Lupita?
I, I appreciate my colleagues really trying to dissect where the, where the problem really lies. And I'm glad that we've had this discussion, because now it makes sense to me too, that it, it's the timing of things and given, I mean, we get this feedback from the community when they're not comfortable with something happening. I think it's our, our duty to respond to them, the concerns that they have, and within the constraints that we do have, being in the planning board, where we respond to what is brought to us. Whenever we have an opportunity to proactively address the concerns of the community, is what we have to do. So I appreciate both John and, and Sarah trying to figure out where, so that we can still do something to, to listen and respond positively to the concerns of the community. So I think that this is, this is one of those instances where we're finding what the problem may be. And I don't want to mean a problem, but more so the challenge. So if we are going to be receiving this project before us, and the community hasn't provided the feedback, we may not even be able to make a good recommendation, because we haven't heard about all the concerns. Oftentimes, our community members do have important concerns that we have not even brought up or we not been aware of. And so I've learned my lesson in this board to really do try to listen to our community, because they sometimes have very valid points. And this may be one of those instances where, where we should have that opportunity to, so that we can make better decisions. So I just wanted to point out, because that's the way I, I'm interpreting this thing, and it took several rounds to get to the crucible of, of the issue. So I, I'm, I'm agreeing more comfortably now with, you know, what the concerns may be from John. And thank you, Sarah, for helping it define it.
Can I weigh in on that, Lupita? So I think that I hear your concerns, and I think the concerns are around whether you feel that there's been enough public input onto the form-based code. My, my concern is that we're taking this mechanism in the SEEP that is intended for very specific projects that don't have the stopgaps built into their processes to apply the SEEP so that those things get looked at by the public. There is energy from John and maybe others on the board to use this process to try to add additional public scrutiny. I'm not convinced that this is the right process to add. I've heard repeatedly from staff that this is not a good fit for, for, for solving the problem that you are raising here, which is something that we can discuss in the September second meeting. But I, I, maybe I'm the only lone voice on that. lone voice on that. I haven't heard very many other people speak up other than John and Sarah. So Sarah, go ahead.
I just want to offer up an idea. And I, this again, this is outside the CIP. And this is more of a question to Jacob, really. Given that Chris has said there's going to be opportunities for public input, couldn't we sequence things a little different to have the opportunity for public input and then have our meeting on the form based code? So that it's sequenced the right way?
Well, it's a great question here. Thanks for asking. Truth of the matter is, I don't know the answer to your question, but I will investigate it, find out and report back to the planning board. And I think you're correct that I don't know the degree to which this is actually germane to the CIP discussion, but I will talk to Charles. I'll talk to my planning staff and we will provide you a full brief in regards to public engagement relative to form based coding at Alpine Balsam.
I was going to make a motion that we move on from this topic until we hear back from our planning director.
I'll second that motion.
And I'll be happy to do that as soon as possible as of next meeting, unless there's some, some barrier to us doing that, but happy to get that information.
You know, John was about to ask you to put a timeline on that.
Of course. And, and I don't think there's any problem with us getting back to you by our next meeting.
So we have, uh, do we want to do that motion or are people happy moving just to a motion on the, on the CIP in general?
Can we, again, it's outside the bounds of the CIP, but I'd love to be able to make a motion that we will that we're making, that we're requesting that planning staff consider a change in schedules. So that can be public in, public dialogue about the form based code before it comes to planning board. That, that would be my.
I made a motion already and David seconded, but I would say that I could amend my motion to say that we are awaiting information so that we could do what you just said, because we, I don't have the information to do what you just said. So I couldn't vote for it until I know. And Jake and, and our director said he would get that info.
So could you stand, restate your motion, Peter?
Well, originally it was close, move on from this topic until we have the information from staff so that we can then continue it outside the bounds of the CIP discussion for one. And then Sarah put a finer point on it and I responded that I would amend mine to say, I mean, it's not too different than what I said, which is moving on until we have information so that we can then discuss this with the right information. Sarah asked a great question. We need to get that information and we need to, I think, continue with our CIP discussion and our other matters. Because I think it's abundantly clear that this is a topic we want to discuss further.
Okay, so a motion that we're going to vote on, I think we need to articulate and
Do we need a motion?
Well, you, you, you're asking us to move on so that we can complete our CIP discussion because what we just did is we did a detour into form based code. And there's questions on the process around form based code that people seem to want to resolve before we move on. John and then Lupita.
Yeah, I, I, I understand and sympathize with what, what Peter and, and Sarah are, are trying to do here, but we are being asked to make recommendations about the processes involved as part of the CI. As, you know, as part of tonight's agenda. And so I, I'm unclear how adopting Peter's suggestion would affect our ability to respond on what we're being asked to deal with tonight.
I'm not, I, I think that what Peter and Sarah were thinking of was, I mean, let me know if you're right. Was that it would put it in the form of a motion, but we just heard from Jacob that staff is committing, resolving this for us for next week. So maybe it's okay, just to take that as staff's promise to us and move on to a motion on the CIP.
Do we have a board meeting next week?
I remember the second, I'm sorry, the second of September.
But this, but the second is the day that we're supposed to be hearing the the did I hear Cindy correctly that we're having the meeting on the second about Alpine Balsam?
Yes.
Hello, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. So it seems like we have to make, we outside the CIP. I mean, I, I would say I'm happy to set aside a CEAP, a SEEP. If we have a a, a agreement from staff that the, they'll change the sequencing of the planning board hearing. So there can be some public engagement before we hear the, the, the form based code proposal on Alpine Balsam.
Okay, this is, we're talking two weeks from now.
No, no, I'm saying.
When we hear the proposal on Alpine Balsam. So what are you asking for to happen between now and two weeks?
I'm not asking anything to happen from now on September 2nd. It's in terms of public engagement. I'm asking for staff to agree that we will change the schedules around so that we push back the Alpine Balsam hearing to give staff, including Chris, the time to do the public engagement they say they want to do. So that we aren't sort of baking the cake before people have had a chance to.
This is how we, I'm, I'm sorry, but this is how you turn planning board meetings into four hour meetings that should be two hour meetings. We bring in something completely unrelated and try to wrangle some, something that could be done outside of this meeting. Jacob, I, I, I don't know what we can do about promising to change schedule overall schedules on big projects right now in this meeting. Based on trying to use the SEEP as leverage, but.
Happy to weigh in. I mean, quite frankly, not prepared to discuss this tonight. We were prepared for the CIP discussion and had done my homework in that regard. Sarah, I don't honestly know the, the, the full schedule that relates to Alpine Balsam in terms of its engagement or its presentation to you. I would have to do my research and talk to my staff. But with that said, I'd, I'd be happy to do it as soon as possible and get back to, to, to our chair or to you offline and inform us of what we could do. But, um, I, I just honestly do not have that information at hand or know exactly what our process is, or frankly, what our ability or authority is to modify that process before we come back to you. But what I can commit is to do that research as soon as possible and to communicate outside of a session if possible.
Sorry, I'm, I'm confused as to what Chris had brought up originally, which was the, the public engagement around the form based code. How is that going to happen? I, I just, I don't understand how that's going to happen.
I, I really think that we're off topic. I think that what, I think staff has heard that there's concern about hearing about public engagement around form based code, but we're, we're on a completely different agenda item here. And I, I would move that we stop discussion on, on the form based code for Alpine Balsam, public outreach and allow staff to do their work before our next meeting. Why, I would, I would, and we move on. Why would just move that? Do I have a second for that? Peter seconds, all in favor? Just two of us. Okay. We keep talking about it.
I, I think, I'm sorry, David, I just think that you're, that we, what, what, the question that was brought up was a SEEP about Alpine Balsam. And what we're trying to do is.
Yes, that is the question in front of us.
But I'm sorry, I know, I'm, I don't know why I'm so frustrated because I think what we're trying to do is to find a way around a SEEP. Because that's a lot of additional work for staff. So we're trying to find a way around that, but to still address the concern, which is space for public.
That's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is that there are planning board members who do not believe what they've been told by staff in that the amount of public outreach that is involved in the entire area planning process leading up to the form based code approval and other approvals that will follow incorporates all of the types of public process that you would get with a SEEP. And we have planning board members that do not believe that. So they want to add on an additional process called the SEEP to Alpine Balsam. And I'm not sure I understand exactly what planning board members who support that really think they're going to get out of that other than some additional meetings, but go ahead.
I'm not saying I support the idea of a SEEP. I do support the idea of some public input on the form based code stuff. Before we have our meeting where we're supposed to make recommendations. And I don't mean public meetings like planning board meetings, but the public engagement process. That's what I'm saying. And I'm, I'm, I'm not committed to this. I'm not saying I support a SEEP. I don't want to make staff do all this additional work, but I, I do want there to be public input or public engagement before we.
Okay. So one thing we can do is we can try to finish this agenda item. And then if somebody has an additional motion they would like to make, they can make it. I, I think that staff has said that they heard what the concern. So we can certainly make it more formal than that. Lupita?
Oh yes, I just made to sure that I was muted because I, I, again, trying to figure out what the, the miscommunication is happening because again, I see what we're trying to do is define whether the SEEP was the, the, the one process by which was left to get input for the, from the community. And if that was not the avenue, there's got to be another avenue to increase that input from the community. And you separating them as if they're two different topics. They are not. They are the same topic. We are trying to make sure that the community has input one way or another. So by dismissing one so that you vote on something when we're not clear, if that is the avenue, then without knowing what's going to happen later, it's like, I don't care what's going to come later. I just want to address what I have in front of me because I cannot connect these two points. You may not be able to connect it. I can, Sarah can, and John can, and possibly the other members can. So let's go back to, let's see what the common point is. The issue here is community input. It is very clear to me that that is what we want to make sure happens. If, if it's not being done through SEEP because it will be too much of a problem or too much work for our, our staff, that there's going to be an alternative. And to decouple them, like they have nothing to do with each other. Does, that is just not very efficient. Because we're going to be create a problem later and people are going to be unhappy now that we are here to make people happy, but we're here to do a good job. And to me, doing a good job is to be able to see connections. And if you don't see those connections, then we got to work on it so that you can see them. Because I don't have a problem seeing that connection.
So, uh, okay, I heard that. Peter?
Thank you Lupita for that. I want to bring us back from a verge of of singling each other out. I've got a little testy the last 15 minutes here. My problem with this is that when you're opposed to a project, there's no amount of meetings or public input that will be enough. And I, I'm concerned there's a cudgel here and something that isn't, it's a little bit disingenuous. If it's true that there has not been input from the public on this project, this is one of the more controversial and well monitored project. If, so I do believe there's been input of what I'm hearing is there hasn't been input on the specific topic of form based code. Then I, I'm curious what that input around form based code would yield because there could certainly be input on, you know, the style of door hinge on each of the doors that we could also eventually have meetings on. So if there's substantive input around form based code that hasn't been heard that we can hear, then I support Sarah and John's point that additional time would be useful, but I hear staff saying they can't answer that right now. So we could have this conversation for six to 12 hours until we've all gone at each other in different ways because we are increasingly getting irritated with the topic that we can't resolve. We all want to get our minds around it. So I just put out there as transparently as possible the issue I'm having where I, I feel like I do see both issues and sides. But I also am hearing that we're not going to get resolution. And so I don't want to see us you know, rip each other apart over this because there's no answers that we can really find right now.
Jacob, did you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. Just maybe to, I'd like to offer maybe a couple of points of clarification. The, the form based code process relative to Alpine Balsam is actually being run by the planning staff within Housing and Human Services. It is not run by our department. So there's a multi departmental collaboration going on as they are attempting to deliver the housing that will be built at Alpine Balsam. And I don't believe looking through this, that, that we have anybody from HHS in this session. Nor were, were they prepared to discuss it. So again, if, if the planning board would be so kind to extend us a little bit of time to coordinate with our colleagues, we would be happy to gather the relevant information and report back to you about what the outreach process looks like, what the writing process looks like and what the adoption process looks like for, for that form based code. That is not a process that I or my staff are, are leading or deeply involved in. However, our colleagues at HHS are. So I would just offer to you all that we can do that coordination and report back to you as soon as possible. And, and inform your, your next steps as we go forward. And again, I apologize that we weren't totally prepared to discuss that this evening, but happy to, to assemble the relevant folks and report back to you as soon as possible.
Thank you, Jacob. John?
Yeah. Thank you, Jacob. I think that, that, I appreciate that offer a lot. The problem is that we won't get that information in time for us to respond to it before we're asked to deal with the with the code on, on our next meeting, if I understand the schedule correctly. And so that means we won't be able to get the input that we want from the neighborhood and from the public in advance of our being asked to recommend it or approve it. And so that's the problem. And that's why I hesitate to, you know, I think that's a good good proposal, except that it doesn't fit, doesn't satisfy our schedule requirements.
So does it, would it allow us to at least close off the agenda item that we're talking about with regards to CIP? Or are we still, are we still in the, of the mindset that somehow adding on a SEEP requirement would solve this? I'm just, I'm trying to get us back, bring us back in. We're actually jumping to the next planning board meetings, agenda item without the experts in the room. Sarah?
So I have a suggestion. So I, I, I trust that staff will come back to us with a proposal of how to, how to do this the right way. And I'm happy to not support a SEEP. I do not want to be making staff do additional work. But I do want this to be sequenced the right way so that we get this public input. So I, I'm not, I, I, you know, we are, it's not our job. It's inappropriate for any of us to assume motive on part of any of our other members. And I'm just trying to make sure that we are getting input on a thing that will be a big thing, a big part of the community for years to come. So I'm happy to not support a SEEP so that we can get back to the CIP process. But I do want, I do appreciate and respect staff will come back to us with a solution so that there is public input that, that is adequate to the form based code issues or questions or concerns or interests, whatever the right word is. And that they'll figure out a way to sequence that so that we get that information, we get that input, the public is able to give that input in a way that is segues nicely with the decisions we will be asked to make.
And that was my point about trying to make a good faith effort to figure out whether, and I think that conversation started with whether this process that we were discussing today was the right process to follow in terms of getting more of the input. Was this the right process where we will give their, the, the community an opportunity to input? It, it appears that it's not because it's going to give extra work unnecessarily, but there is another potential way to do it. But the timing on which we're asked to do this is not feasible. It, nothing to do, to me, that they're not connected. So it's about getting the right input and, and getting showing a good faith effort from the city and the board and the community to come together and so that we move forward with the project that is going to be meeting everybody's you know, compromise because it may not meet everybody's appointment. I have nothing against the projects. It's about making sure that we all try our best to come together with a resolution that people will be accepting. Because we, everybody tried to do their best. That's it. And I feel the best being, you know, let's try to resolve. because we, everybody tried to do their best. That's it. And I feel the best being, you know, let's try to resolve where we can get the input that we need so that we as the board can give, you know, substantive and informed um responses to the questions that have been, we are being asked. That's it.
Hello?
Yeah, I um, I was just send a link to the memo and it occurred to me that there is a public feedback section in there that's, the memo is being drafted right now for the meeting next week. And I just wanted to let you know what it includes in terms of public outreach. And all I can tell you is what it says there because I wasn't involved in it. Um, and it says that was a community briefing on May twenty-fourth, the team provided an update on the project and overview of the draft form-based code at a virtual community briefing. Um, there's a recording of that, that you'll be able to access once the memo goes out. Um, there was a discussion draft of the code changes that's available. I, I assume that was maybe the presentation that was given there. Um, and then there's a section that talks about office hours, staff and the project consultant hosted virtual drop-in office hours for community members who have questions or feedback about Alpine Blossom redevelopment and the draft code on June twenty-ninth and on July first. Um, and then there was a questionnaire intended to gather feedback on the draft code that was hosted on Be Heard Boulder between mid-June and July twenty-five and over one hundred and ninety community members provided feedback.
Great.
So
helpful to know. That's super helpful to know.
And that's something that will be seen in our packet for next time. So um, I, I, you know, I can stay here all night, obviously. Um, we can keep talking about Alpine Blossom until we're blue in the face. And I don't mean to be uh flipping, but um but um, I'd like to make a motion if I could. Are people okay with that? Um, I, I'd like to move that the planning board recommends to the city manager and city council the recommended twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven capital improvement program, including the list of CIP projects to undergo a community and environmental assessment process as identified in the staff memorandum. Uh, I see a second by Peter. Uh, discussion?
I uh, I have a question. I thought we already had a, a motion that we were considering. Has that been uh rejected or?
Oh, um, did that one get withdrawn, Peter?
What's going on here?
Did, did your question to move on get withdrawn because we didn't move on?
We didn't vote on it because we talked about it and then we had further discussion and Hella can uh advise if it needs to be closed and voted on, but uh
I think the motion had a first and a second and it failed.
Oh, that's right. We did, uh, we, we voted and it was two to
That's right. We did vote and it failed.
Yeah. So that, that's right. It's closed out. I forgot, I forgot what happened because it had been so long. Yeah, Sarah?
I am very happy to support David's motion and I, and I appreciate Hella giving us some information about inputs because we will see that input uh on Sep- before September second. Um, and apparently according to Chris Rangelos, there will be additional input after we have our hearing and we shall see how, we will um, we will uh, so that's my position. Well, I'm, I'm happy to support the motion. And I appreciate that there's been input already and know there will be more.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, any other uh discussions before we vote? John?
So I had also suggested that CU South be the topic of a, of a, this uh additional investigation. And uh, I'm, I still believe that. So uh, in that case, I'm, I don't think I'll be able to support your uh motion.
We have recused members on CU South.
Pardon?
And I don't know how, how, how we handle a discussion or vote or comments on CU South when we have accused uh members.
Um, I, I would recommend that members who are recused not participate in that particular discussion. And if you wanted to make a motion on it ultimately, then it could just be the rest of the board.
Yeah, if that's gonna move into that discussion, then I do have to recuse or at least not vote, but um I didn't know that we were gonna go there.
Well, let's see where it goes. Um, you're always, you're welcome to make a friendly or um, or a separate motion later on, whichever you might want to do. A friendly amendment to this motion or?
Are, are you talking to me?
Yeah, I, I'm telling, I'm giving you a couple of options. You can either make a friendly to add on your requests to this motion or you can do a separate motion later on.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make a friendly if uh, if I can get a second. And that is that uh that I do suggest or we, the, the planning board should uh, uh insist on a, a SEEP study for CU South.
Uh, do you also want to include Alpine Blossom in that um for the record?
No, I, I think uh the proposal for Alpine Blossom is, I'm glad with this discussion and, and willing to head with that.
So I'm not going to accept that friendly amendment. Um, so um we'll go forward with this motion and you can always raise another motion later, I guess. Um, any other discussion?
Yeah, point of clarification. So to be clear, this motion is not only addressing Blossom.
It doesn't have anything about Alpine Blossom in it.
Or CU South.
Or CU South.
Or CU South.
Yeah, you're free to vote on this motion.
We're back to the original. Okay, because now he was talking about that, this two things together. I said, okay, now I'm kind of a little lost. So I just want to make sure.
I was just letting John get his uh objection, his idea on the record by offering a friendly, which um, uh, the motion maker did not accept. So um, so also we state the motion, uh, the planning board recommends to the city manager and city council the recommended twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven capital improvement program, including the list of CIP projects to undergo a community environmental assessment process, SEEP, as identified in the staff memorandum. Uh, Peter?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Lupita?
Hi.
Uh, Georgie?
Hi.
John?
Hey.
And I'll vote aye. So the motion passes uh five to one. Uh, and uh, thank you so much to all of you wonderful staff members for the great presentation and the wonderful uh CIP. It's always just so amazing to see that fabulous package. We, we enjoy such wonderful uh uh infrastructure and amenities here in Boulder. It's, it's just great. So thank you so much for that and for hanging in there with us through all that.
Thanks, Chris.
And a big thank you to all of our staff who hung out with us for the, for the evening. Incredible job. Thank you all for being here and, and taking the time.
Thank you. And Cindy had something to raise before we finish the thing.
I do, and maybe I missed it and I apologize if I did. Um, you, John, you had raised a, a, you had made a friendly about um, the planning board should insist on a SEEP study on CU South. But I never heard if um David or David and or Peter accepted that.
I did not accept it.
They didn't accept it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry I missed that.
And I guess I should ask if you wanted to make any more motions or if you gave the word already.
Well, I, I would like to make that motion that uh, that was rejected as a friendly.
Okay.
That uh, that uh, the SEEP study be done in connection as part of the CU South uh process.
Can I ask a clarifying question here before we have a vote? I, I'm, I was tracking the timing component of the public input on form-based code on the the SEEP Alpine Blossom conversation, but I'm not similarly tracking the SEEP CU South concept of pub- of a lack of public input on any piece of this that would then necessitate or require this additional SEEP component.
So, so what's your question?
Uh, I was tracking the timing issue on Alpine Blossom and then we have a meeting coming up and there was some concern until perhaps it was somewhat quelled by Hella indicating the public input that has happened around form-based code. I'll leave that aside. The CU South concept, I just want to make sure I understand where you're going, where you're at with this before we have a vote, so I know how I want to vote. There isn't a similar concern around timing of a, a date coming up. It's for example, September second.
Can, can we see if we have a second on this before we even discuss it? Because uh, we don't even have a second at this point. Um, and then if, if, if people are interested enough in moving forward to second it, then maybe we can have a discussion. Does that make sense?
I, I'd be interested in the discussion because I, I'm not sure where I'm landing because I, I agree with Peter. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm not totally tracking it, but I, I, I would like to understand John's perspective.
Well, my, my concern is that this is so vaguely and poorly formulated at this point uh that uh, that even with an annexation agreement in the way that is, it is, has been developed so far, uh, the neighbors really don't know what's likely to happen uh in their vicinity and they should have an opportunity to provide input. And I, I view that this is, this process is probably the most efficient way for them to do that. But uh, if there's some other process whereby Boulder and CU have to take account of what the neighbors think, then I'm open to it. But so far, this seems to be the the most appropriate one. Uh, and the reason I say that is because it's still uh very poorly formulated exactly where the, the development that are proposed by CU will be on the property. Uh, and uh, the, the city roads that go through have also not been clearly established. And these are all critical issues for the neighborhood. And that's why I want this uh, I think that it's appropriate to have a, a public process to do, to address that.
Hella, did you want to?
Yeah, it, it would be important to talk about what part of the CU project you're referring to. SEPs are generally for public improvements of the city. And the CU South project is a lot bigger than that. A lot of it is not city development, but the city does have some on that property where the city is planning public improvements, obviously, the flood, the flood mitigation project. But you can require a SEEP unless that was maybe required. And unless a process like that was required through the annexation agreement for the university development itself.
I, I understand that the university has its plans and uh its independent uh ability to make decisions, but there's a number of city facilities that are being discussed too, including a fire station and roads and uh, and uh the flood management and perhaps some of the athletic and park-related facilities. So it seems to me there's enough city capital investment going on there that there should be this additional uh public input.
So maybe, maybe Jacob could clarify for us a little bit because I guess that's the other question is sort of if, if a SEEP is redundant to a public process, is there a public process planned for those things going forward? Because that's what I'm unclear on.
Uh, I think it's already, um, again, uh, this this process is, is one that is, is handled through our public works staff. This is a, a flood mitigation project and uh something such as a SEEP would be conducted, as Hella said, in order to facilitate more public input and further, further investigation around a public improvement project. My understanding of the flood mitigation, and again, that's not my area of expertise, that's speaking about other staff, is that what is, what has already been conducted in the design and analysis for the flood mitigation at the CU site is equivalent to or in excess of the level of investigation that would occur with a SEEP. And that the processes that have occurred there have already accounted for the information that would be gathered through that. That's what I understand from my colleagues. So I'm just conveying the information that I know. That's not my area of specialty. And I'm not leading the flood mitigation by any means. Um, so that's what I understand to be the reason why the SEEP has not been incorporated into this because the methods that have already been uh, uh conducted to design and complete the flood mitigation study um go above and beyond what would otherwise have been done by the SEEP. And uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that. But again, um speaking a little bit outside my area of expertise here because we're not leading the flood mitigation project. That's our, our public works staff.
I, I, I specifically didn't talk about the flood mitigation project. I talked about the other city investments that are going on there. The streets, the fire station, parks, that sort of thing, open space.
And John, just to be clear to, to Hella's point, I think where she's coming from is that there, the only capital project that is proposed related to CU South is that flood mitigation project until we're able to identify additional capital projects, whether it be roads, additional infrastructure, whatever it may be, that would be the time that we would be able to recommend a SEEP for that project. But a SEEP is not really meant or used to um analyze any sort of annexation agreement. It's really, excuse me, tied to specific capital projects.
So we don't even have a second for this motion yet and
So wait, wait, just to clarify, because I, I think that will, that will help me in sort of making, make, I, I, David, I need to ask a question. You okay with that?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I guess to Chris's point, outside of the flood mitigation to John's concerns, is there a public process that will take place for those specific items when they come about?
I assume so for certain projects. And if there's not a, a, a public process identified for a project, then that's where a SEEP does come in, right? If it's type of project that we do want to make sure that we are getting um public feedback on related anywhere on the CU South property, then then yeah, that is somewhere that we may recommend a SEEP to, to have happen. Um, the downtown Boulder Transit Station enhancements is an example of um, a project that we feel like we needed to get out and do additional engagement and understand the true different alternatives that exist. Um, that was a capital project that had been planned and programmed into the six-year CIP, so therefore there was a recommendation on that specific project. If the CU South annexation was a specific capital project, um which the annexation is not, then that is something that we could apply a SEEP to. Um, but again, till we're able to identify what those projects are um and identify what that public engagement process does look like, it's at that point that we would make a recommendation on SEEP.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Does anyone want to second it? Okay, so that drops. Okay, we're gonna take, um, now I'll thank everybody. We'll be moving on to the next agenda item after a break. Um, we'll uh take the break until uh eight uh forty, ten-minute break. Chris, I guess, will Chris be leading us through that again? Let me see. Jacob, is Chris going to be doing the?
I believe that that is actually going to be led by Joanna Crean, and she made it.
Oh, Joanna, Joanna.
There she is, there's Joanna.
All right, I was moving slow on clicking. Sorry about that.
No problem. I just was, I was going to actually say a few more things before I handed over to you anyway.
Yeah, that's fine.
To get a little bit. So I just wanted to remind people that this is an informational update. This was also given to city council, I guess, earlier this, or last week, I guess it was. And so we're going to be getting, doing a full recommendation on October 7th. So we'll be looking at this again more formally in October. So keeping that in mind, there's probably not as many staff members here to answer questions as there will be on October 7th. But please do ask questions to help inform our later more formal review of this. Other than that, there's no action required from us. So just learn what you can. And I'll go ahead and turn it over then to Joanna for this, for this item. Thank you so much. And thanks for being here.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So I'm Joanna Crean, the Director of Facilities and Fleet. And so the other person that is here in case we have some other questions is our financial analyst Raphael Tingley. Our facilities engineer, cities engineer, Michelle Crane, who will actually be doing the presentation with Chris Rangelos on October 7th. Michelle Crane is actually out of the office this week. So she has been working on the facilities master plan for last number of years with a team of folks, including Raphael and myself and others. But we didn't have a formal presentation this evening since we will be doing that later in October. Essentially, just wanted to let you all know and point you to the information item that we did submit or that got sent out. And sorry, I think there was an incorrect link in there for the master plan document itself. But I think you got the corrected link sent to you, I believe, by Cindy later, which was great. The facilities master plan is actually the first one that we've done in that we've never had a master plan that looked comprehensively at all of our city facilities. So as you all are quite familiar with master plans, since I know they come through the purview of the planning board in relation to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, we often have had master plans that talk about city facilities from a department specific. So like the library or Parks and Rec related to recreation centers. This is a master plan that instead is encompassing all of those, but looking comprehensively. So this is the first time we've actually done that in the city organization. So that in and of itself is exciting. We have actually done quite a work, a lot of work over the last number of years, collecting data and analyzing the data. But essentially, the city has basically 1.8 gross square feet that is spread across 75 buildings. On average, the age of our buildings is around 47 years old. So that's not super new, but I guess super old if you're thinking maybe 100. Typically, we are obviously have city buildings. Our city buildings tend to be looking to last, obviously, a long period of time. But we do have quite a number that are, that are reaching an older age, which means there's a lot more challenges in terms of just repairs and maintenance with those buildings. We've also have been, as I know, I think was mentioned earlier this evening by David about the climate action plan. And there's quite a lot of work that has been going on. But the client, the plan calls for an 80% reduction in emissions in our city buildings by 2030. So that has obviously been a big focus of what we've been looking at going forward. Right now, we certainly have been in a place where we have tried to address some of the, I guess you could say, low hanging fruit to try and address those. And some of the bigger things that are up ahead are, are things that are going to require a lot more work to really eliminate some of the renewable energy so that we can eliminate the renewable energy to meet our goals. Our buildings in the typically have been more of a reactive maintenance. As we've seen those costs skyrocket, again, that's another reason that we've had an opportunity to look more comprehensively of how we're addressing our buildings and our building needs. And what our facilities master plan is going to be bringing forward in the discussion that we'll have with all of you is a couple key initiatives. One of those is looking to maintain our buildings well in terms of going forward. And the other one is focused around consolidation. And then the third one is actually how we can financially address that and have a strategy for that going forward and do some more analysis going forward in terms of how we address that. So that work will all be as part of the draft master plan. If you saw that, it's obviously in a draft format. But the presentation will go into a lot more detail in October, but happy to answer any general questions that folks may have. And I recognize it's late, so I don't want to take too much of your time.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Joanna. Any questions people have from going through the facilities master plan? Well, I'll just say that, you know, it's always an amazing thing to see a new master plan come out. I know how much work goes, go into those and it's quite a heavy list. So thank you, thank you for that. I also wondered, Joanna, that one thing that I thought might be kind of interesting to the public coming out of this and is to know, like, are we going in the direction of, of, you know, what is the land imprint of the buildings? You know, maybe, maybe consolidating actually means that we kind of free up. So, you know, we actually have less, I saw square footage numbers in there, but I didn't really see like acreage numbers in there. So it might, might be kind of interesting to see whether our acreage use within the city actually goes down with the end goal. So I don't know if anything's been done on that.
Yeah, you know, we, we looked at a couple different slices at land. And I guess really the facilities being the focus, so not as much on the land disposition. But for facilities specifically, we realized that there are a number of properties that may no longer be of interest to the city to continue to be the owner of. But there could be some other social or environmental perspectives on that. So we realized that kind of everything's on the table. And whether or not that will shrink our footprint will be certainly part of future conversations. Absolutely.
Great. Sarah?
Just want to follow up on both David's question and Joanna's answer. Is it, is there discussion about, as you think about buildings that the city may no longer want to own, but the parcels they may want to own? And because we have much more control over, we can build a lot of housing, for example, on land that we own and build what we say we need. So is that a part of the discussion as well?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, again, obviously in partnership with all of our different departments and Housing and Human Services is very much a part of the conversation. While, for instance, to your point, we may have used a certain building for, you know, more of an office type facility. There may be some other use different that could be potentially for some other purpose. So it could be that the city continues to maintain, whether it's the building or the property itself. But then it could have a different use and provide different services.
Repeat that.
Yeah, so buildings are designed to last a certain amount of time. That's what the sign is done in engineering. And in the age that you mentioned, it's actually rather large because many of them, they have a life of about 50 years. And given that we know our country has an infrastructure that is crumbling, I'm wondering in your assessment that you made, there's a high prioritization of those that have reached the life. And is it the life usually between 50 and 100? Or whereabouts? I mean, I'd like to know a little bit of the details just so that, and also a percentage in terms of, you know, are these the ones that are going to go first? And what kind of criteria you consider in terms of repurposing that land? You know, for example, if this is a unsalvageable building, that the location of that building may be better suited for something else like, you know, housing, for example. That's the sort of information we're going to be getting. And is there something along those lines that we can kind of prepare to ask better questions for you next time you come?
You know, we will have a presentation that does kind of touch on some more of those specifics. But actually, a lot of that will be more in the appendices and that we are still pulling together. So it's not in the draft plan. It is behind the scenes. It's just not in a user-friendly format yet. So it's not in the draft plan. Uh, it, it is behind the scenes, it's just not in a user-friendly format yet. But it will be for purposes of discussion and, um, review by planning board in October. Uh, to your point, well taken in terms of the age of the buildings. And, and you're right, we do look for those buildings to be between 50 and 100 years old. And we do have all the statistics on all the different buildings. And we do have quite a different number of criteria that we are evaluating. Uh, as an example, our Park Central Building, which you may be familiar, it has, uh, mustard's last stand. Um, and then New Britain Building, both of those buildings are at the end of their useful life. And, um, it also happens to be in floodplain, uh, area. So obviously, that ends up being a great opportunity to repurpose that land for other uses. Um, but your point's well taken, that there's a lot of criteria. And we do have the analysis, um, that we pulled together related to all those different buildings.
Great. Any more questions on the facilities master plan? I'll just point out that, um, there, the three key issues that will be asked to weigh in on in October were laid out in our packet. So, uh, it kind of tees us up to start thinking about, you know, consistency with the BBCP. Um, does it, uh, BBCP's service standards and, uh, uh, capital needs? So those are the three areas that we're, uh, going to be asked to weigh in on in October. Cool. All right. Well. Excellent. If there's no more questions, then thank you so much for that update. And we'll be looking forward to seeing the, you know, the, the more fleshed out version in October and having a, a good discussion.
Looking forward to it. Thanks so much. Appreciate everyone's time tonight.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Good. Well, with that then, um, I guess, um, in terms of, uh, we're in the matters section. And I guess, uh, since it is still not quite nine o'clock, we can probably go ahead. And, um, I, I was going to bring up a matter from the board, uh, that Sarah and others had raised earlier, uh, this year. Uh, and that is that, um, there has been a little bit of confusion around, um, uh, the cutoff for submitting, uh, stuff via email for us to consider, uh, in public hearings and, uh, uh, quasi judicial hearings. Uh, that, that, um, when we went virtual, it was changed to 48 hours. I think it, you, maybe it used to be 24 hours. And, uh, I think that, um, that the board hasn't always, you know, recognized that, you know, these emails that come in the last couple of days before a meeting were really not actually supposed to, uh, taken into account in our, uh, decision-making. Uh, so I thought, um, it would be good to open that up for board discussion, uh, and just make sure that we, you know, get a chance to understand how we can, you know, hopefully communicate that to the public. But also, um, if there's any adjustments that we feel we might want to make to that at this point, so. Um, Sarah, did you want to?
Can I ask some questions first? I think of, of Hella and Cindy. So, um, we voted for the 48-hour cutoff as part of the COVID regulations. What was the regulation before COVID? Was it, uh, was it 24 hours or was it zero? I just don't, I don't know what it was.
Yeah, I believe, I don't think we had anything in writing. Um, I think it was at least 24 hours. I remember that it was discussed by the board many years ago, maybe John was on the board back then, I, I don't recall. But they, there were items that were coming in front of the board, um, that, that had a lot of public input. And from a legal perspective, you have to read all of the communication that comes in to make it part of the record. So I think there has to be at some point a cutoff that gives you the time to read it all before the meeting start, starts. Also, the, the applicant has to have an opportunity to read all of that before it comes in. Um, and to just make that clear, I think we discussed at some point that 24-hour cutoff and that would allow planning board members to review everything that comes in before the meeting actually starts. Um, and, and to give the applicant enough time to review it as well. But I don't think there was anything in writing. And then when we drafted, I think we drafted these electronic hearing rules when COVID started. Um, I think David Gier drafted it back then and we put in 48 hours. Because nobody knew how we were going to be able to conduct these hearings and how long things were going to take. And so what, everything was new, we were all virtual all of a sudden. Um, and that's where the 48 hours came from originally. And I think right now, all boards have the 48-hour rule, that the planning board sets its own rules. And, uh, and we've already done one modification to it previously, so you do have the authority to do this.
Um, so I'm happy that I, others may have questions, but I'm happy to, um, remind or repeat what I, what I had been asking about, which was, could we move it to 24 hours? But others may have questions first.
Well, I think that, um, yeah, that, and that's interesting. Thank you, Hella, for the history. Because I was trying to think back before the, the virtual, uh, meeting rules that we voted on. It, it did seem like, um, that things would come in, you know, that we would sometimes see, you know, up to at least 24 hours before. And there wasn't quite as much discussion about the cutoff before the virtual meeting rules went in place. So, I mean, it would be nice just to be able to tell the, tell ourselves and the public what the expectations really are. And I, I think that it would be also good, like, you know, for the public to know, if you, if you missed the cutoff, you can still come in and say something in public hearing, right? But that's the, that's the way you can assure that it gets heard, uh, if, if you miss the cutoff. It's just to come up and sign up and speak and then, and then present it in the public hearing verbally. Uh, because, uh, otherwise it didn't make it into the public record. So, and I'm not sure there's any place on the website that says that. But it, it, for me, it would be nice to be able to tell the public that, because then they know that there's a way that they can, they can get something heard if they miss the cutoff.
It is on the website.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yes.
Great.
It is, I put all, all the rules of decorum and the rules of speaking are on the website. They've been on the website.
John? You're muted.
Uh, thanks. No, no, I just wanted to check with Cindy if there were any practical aspects of 24 versus 48 hours that, uh, that, that are, that we should be thinking about.
Well, thanks for, for asking. I appreciate that. Um, no, I, I think I can do 24 hours. You know, I think back to like the large meetings where we have a lot of public, like, um, Sioux South or Alpine Bosom and things like that. But, um, I, I would really like to not have less than 24 hours, because there is a lot of work involved with, um, compiling all those and keeping track of them, getting them on the website. Um, I would like to request to not have less than 24 hours. Uh, because, and then the same goes for presentations, if people want to, because we did allow that now. We are allowing that now, um, for public members who have a presentation, not less than 24 hours, because I need to vet it and put it together. And, um, my only concern is, if I, if, if I may, is, um, if planning board is different than other boards, it may confuse the public. But I'm just going to put that out there, but it's your decision, whatever you feel comfortable with, whatever you want to do. But it may confuse the public a little bit, because we would be different. But I'm, that's all I'm going to say.
Any thoughts about that, whether it would be confusing? Sarah?
So I don't know that I, I don't know that it would be confusing. I, I, I think one of the interesting revelations is that if you, if your document comes in, let, uh, after the cutoff, whatever the cutoff is, it's not part of the public record. And, and I, I don't think that people, um, my guess is that most people don't realize that. Um, and, uh, um, I cer- I certainly didn't realize that if something came in after the deadline, it wasn't part of the public record.
And it shouldn't be considered by you either. It shouldn't be read.
No, no, I understand, I understand that part, that part I understand. But the fact that for the person who's written this, spent the time writing a letter, that it's not, um, part of the public record, I think would probably come as something of a surprise and, and might be perceived as, uh, not being heard. So to David's point, I think we definitely need to make that a, um, a very clear, uh, point, uh, on our website. You know, maybe even above, you know, make, put it at the top so people know. And, and I personally think that, um, my own feeling is at 24 hours, I, I, Cindy, I, I do hear what you're saying. But I think for the public, having, uh, a 24-hour deadline versus a 48-hour deadline, it seems, uh, more reflective of how many people function, which is they're doing other stuff. And then as the hearing nears, they start to focus, and that's when they write their ideas down and they want to send them in. And, um, you know, we talk about public engagement in the letters to us or, and the letters to planning board are a fundamental part of that public engagement process.
Cindy, do you, um, is there, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't look this up in advance. But, um, where on the website is the, um, 24-hour cutoff or 74-hour cutoff?
Um, no, no problem at all. Um, I have the website up all the time. Um.
I know I've read it in the, in the procedures, but, um, I don't know if I've ever looked at it.
Let's see, my little hamster wheel is running around. Um, on the, the page for planning board, it's, uh, has, um, under, under where it says contact planning board, it has the email address, speaking instructions, and that's where we have our, um, visual meetings PDF and the meetings in council chambers PDF, which I don't like how that's worded. I'm going to change that. That's not something I did, IT did that. So, and then if you go to each date, so let's say we go to August 18th, which is today. Um, as you scroll down in there, it also talks about, it also have the speaking, it, speaking instructions for each date. We have a meeting, so it's on every day or every meeting date that I put the speaking instructions.
Okay.
I guess the meetings in council chambers, IT, I think they were thinking that that was the, for like in-person meetings. I don't really like how they worded that. I'm going to ask to change that. And then the virtual meetings is, is our, the rules that we've passed recently.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the website right now. Uh, where, I am, so I'm on today's meeting, where is the?
Scroll down, past the agenda.
Okay.
And it says more resources.
Okay, and then under about the planning board.
And then it says speaking instructions.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Each of, but, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. So I don't know that that's the most intuitive, because it's not about speaking, actually, it's about letters. Um, so maybe, maybe, uh, I mean, I see Hella has her hand up, so she must have some thoughts about this, but.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Uh, I actually have, um, another idea to discuss on how to get the word out there more. But it's not related to the website, so you can discuss that first.
I did have, uh, somebody went in here and changed something recently, because I did have the rules of decorum on here and about our correspondence, and I don't see it on here now. And so something's missing. So, um, because I've always had our rules of decorum on here. And, um.
Yeah, and I know that the, this website's changed significantly in the last few weeks because of the new, the new form.
Yeah.
But it does, I do tend to agree that if, um, to see the information on the submittal, you open up the PDF and it's, um, a bullet item in this, uh, PDF of long procedures. It might, it could be interesting to think about, um, elevating the 48-hour cutoff for materials to something outside on the webpage that people.
I can try to do that. Um, main planning board webpage is a template. And I'm allowed to change anything on that page, so I'm going to have to have IT do it.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, they've been very kind and understanding that planning board is its own beast. And let me make a few changes. And so I've been very appreciative of them, because, um, they've let me change a few things for planning. So they've been very kind, so.
What I see on here is there's like a meeting details. And it says, like, you get physical distancing and a link to join. If there were another bullet that said, uh, please note that, uh, you know, and it's embedded in those other documents, that please note that there's a, uh, if we decide on 24 or 48-hour cutoff, uh, for submission of materials to be entered in the public record. Otherwise, you must attend in person.
Thinking, yeah, I was thinking that might be a good place for it. I could put it on the details page and, um, do that.
Great.
Yeah, and how do people feel about a 20, the difference between a 24 or 48-hour cutoff?
Did you still have your hand up, Hella, or did you want to, before we talked about that or?
Yeah, it's not, it can come in any order, but I, I have another idea of how to potentially notify people that their submitted may not be able to be considered. And, and maybe I'll just put it out there and you can decide when, at what point you want to discuss it. But I, I don't know if we still have it, but at some point, the planning board email address, whenever somebody sent an email to that email address, an automatic response went out. And that said something like, thank you for, for your email. And I think it notified members of the public that they may send comments in that, but that you often aren't allowed legally to respond to them. But that you were reading the, whatever was being sent in and, and were considering it for the meeting. And maybe, I don't know if that email is still going out, so maybe that's one thing to check. And then there could be notification about that cutoff time and to encourage people to, to speak at the meeting if that deadline has passed.
That's a good idea. I could check and see if that auto-response is still being done, because, you know, I don't see it either, because.
I think I accidentally sent from my other personal, um, email and, uh, which is not my Gmail. And I get, I, I get the treatment that the general public would have, and I don't think we have that response on anymore, actually.
Really? Okay.
I accidentally sent from my me.com and I saw something that indicated that it was from an external, uh, email address, but I didn't get an auto-responder. I love that idea.
Yeah, I'll double check on that, yeah.
Is that, I think anybody who sends something to the planning board list should get, uh, a little something, uh, like that back. Because it gives them some assurance that they're seeing, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, well, I'm, as far as the 24 versus 48, I mean, you know, if the planning board feels like we should make our, you know, accommodate something shorter, I, I think that's fine. John, what do you think?
I, 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 I like the 24-hours, uh, limit. I know that, uh, speaking for myself, I finally get myself riled up way too late. So I'm always against the deadline, and I assume others act the same way. So I think if we make it too far in advance, we may be missing out on some of the public input that we want. So we should make it as, as easy as possible to get it, you know, but still consider Cindy's, uh, constraints as well. So I support 24 hours.
Other thoughts? You can be the liberal, the most liberal board out there.
Well, it's, I don't think it's liberal, I think we're just going back to what we kind of did before. Um, I mean, the 48-hour was because, i- if I'm understanding, um, Hella correctly, nobody quite, um, knew what was going to be the impact of going online. And I, I agree with John, I think, uh, you know, part of our job is to, is, we're here to listen and, and, and we want to hear from as many people as we can. We're here for a lot of reasons, but part of it is to listen.
Lupita?
Yeah, I think, and, uh, Cindy already said that she, she's okay with 24 hours, but nothing less than that. I think it makes sense, and, uh, that was a previous way of doing, so I, it just makes sense to me. We can go back to that. Um, and I definitely. And I definitely think that in a website, when the information that I need is hidden somewhere, that could be right in front and you know, is like you will not, you know, your information will not be read if it comes after this 24 hours. That will be right in front, so people can make a decision whether they even want to bother with it. So I recommend that you get, you know, access to that website, so that information can be right up front. But I, yeah, I think that the 24 hours is a very good cutoff.
Georgie, did you have a comment?
No, my only comment was I I'm fully supportive of the 24 hours. The only, my only concern is just Cindy and making sure, I know you said you're okay with that. The only concern would be if if for some reason we had to backtrack on it, then I would, then I would avoid doing it. But outside of that, if we don't foresee having to backtrack on it, then I think it's a great idea.
What do you mean by backtrack on it?
If it, if for some reason, I mean, it was put in place for a reason. So as long as it makes sense to you. Because I don't know the mechanics of what your world is like, and as long as it's something that, you know, you make sense to you, I guess, my point.
And as a side note, I like to advocate that we do it when we go in person, too. 24 hours when we go in person.
Well, and truthfully, before we went virtual, I remember that there was uncertainty on the board as to what we did with those last minute emails. And I think that it's the reason I wanted to have this discussion in matters is so that we actually do acknowledge what it is and that we have this memory going forward so that we don't have uncertainty about what we're supposed to consider. So so I'm really glad we had the discussion. Do we want to, Helen, we should probably vote on this change as a board.
Yeah, and I, it's really just changing a couple of numbers, but I I drafted it and checked changes and I sent it to Cindy. Maybe she can show it and we have the hearing rule as well as the decorum rules. And I actually drafted another little change to the decorum rules. And the reason for that is you will all remember that we had a meeting where there was kind of a Zoom bomber in chat. And I went through our rules and it didn't actually address it expressly. So I'm proposing to to add language that that basically states that those type communication features are for procedural purposes only. Cindy, can you maybe put it on the screen?
Oh, I thought I did. I'm sorry, I forgot to click one more button. We're done. Get rid of all you. Can you zoom in a little bit more, please?
So essentially, it changes 48 hours to 24 hours for submission of anything that's to be shown during the meeting while somebody testifies. There is an enforcement statement that says anybody who violates these rules shall be muted. And I changed that to the speaking roles because I'm proposing to add this number six that says no person shall use the chat question and answer a similar type communication feature of the virtual meeting technology, except to ask procedural questions to or respond to procedural questions raised by staff or the chair.
I have the other document you sent me to, you want me to just display that?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, it's the same one.
You probably have to unshare that one first. Sharing is weird because you take over your whole screen and then you don't know, you can't see what everybody else is seeing. It's very annoying.
No, sorry, guys. Rules of decorum. So you sent me rules, you sent me the same thing. Both emails have the same document.
I'm working on motion language while we're doing this.
Oh, actually.
Oh, there it is. Okay. All right, folks, I'm going to share my screen. Sorry about the delay. Are you in the screen now?
We see your desktop with the cat feet.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's cute though, right?
Very, very, very cute.
Here we go. Everyone see that, okay?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to get down to where her changes are, which I don't see.
It's right there.
Okay.
It's only the 48 to 24.
Okay.
And these are the virtual meeting, are these virtual meeting procedures?
Yes, they are.
Okay, there we have the changes. If is there any additional discussion? I could make a motion.
Can I ask a question? It's related. It's not specific on this. It's just more for my own. It's to acknowledge something that Lynn brought up in her comments and to understand it a little better for myself, which was around the choice not to have video for participants. Because I know that I know that's a frustration of the public and it'd obviously be more engaging. I'm sure there's a good reason for it, but I'm not clear as to what that is.
Yeah, there there are first amendment reasons behind it. If, and the worry was Zoom bombers. And you know, you, when you think of a Zoom bomber, it's somebody playing a video or, you know, doing something on screen that we don't enjoy seeing, and this may be not appropriate during a public meeting, but because this is a public forum, there are strict rules on and and how you can regulate what's being shown. And it is a form of expression how you state something. So we cannot regulate content of speech very much. So we can, we can only do time, place and manner restrictions. We can, we can limit or you can limit it to the subject matter that's being discussed, but then how that's presented, that's part of the freedom of expression. So if if something does something inappropriate on screen, we wouldn't be able to just turn it off. Because that would be a content restriction. And and there are actually people out there who do that just in order to file lawsuits about it later.
That's super helpful. I just wanted to address that because because Lynn had brought it up earlier. And I think it's important, especially knowing that we're going to be in COVID, you know, who knows how long and how long we're going to be virtual that those rules are put in place, but you never know, like this, if it's something that we could look at changing, but that makes a lot of sense.
Sarah, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, sorry, had to unmute. Couldn't we ask, but we could put up, we could ask people to put up a photograph of themselves. I mean, it's just a little, it is a little odd to be. I mean, there's some people who we recognize because they come to a lot of meetings, but it would be nice to see people's faces. Is there a way to photos or something? Or is that still, is that still a content problem? Because we don't know what type of photo they'll put up.
Yeah, we don't know what type of photo they'll put up. And I I think the, one of the Zoom bombers that we experienced was a video that was being played.
Yeah, and I I totally sympathize with Lynn and all the people who have expressed that. I would love to see people's faces, but but yeah, this, I remember we had this discussion back at the beginning of COVID. We have to have to listen to our legal legal advice. So thank you for that. I'm, I'll make a motion that we move to modify the rules of decorum to change the lead time for email and presentation materials to 24 hours and to elaborate on chat decorum and that we change our virtual meeting procedures to change the lead time for materials to 24 hours. Sarah, you're second to?
I'm, I'll second it. And I just want to ask, do we need to be specified that we want changes made on the website or would you just assume that'll happen?
I'll take care of it. And of course, I always review it.
That would be great. Any discussion on the motion? Do we need to restate the motion? Can we avoid that? Okay, let's do show of hands on this one. All in favor? I see six votes. Great. Okay, well, any other any other matters from the board? Any other matters from staff?
Nothing additional from staff, Dave. Thanks.
Thank you, Jacob. Hello, any matters from the city attorney?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, that that leads us to debrief and calendar check. Let's just start with debrief for a minute. I got very testy earlier in this meeting and I apologize for that, but I would appreciate it if when people come to a meeting, this isn't a learning session on what SEEP is. And we can spend an awful lot of time trying to bleed one effort into another if we allow ourselves to get diverted. And that's why I was getting testy. And I'm sure there's a counter argument to that. But I certainly apologize if I was too testy. But that was a well over 90 minutes detour that we took. And there's other ways that we can deal with projects that we may have concerns about other than trying to you know, I think I think that some people in the in the room do know what a SEEP does. But I think other other people were kind of grasping it. Maybe this is something interesting. I it's always good to do our homework in advance and to come with a with a very crisp procedure that we're advocating for. And I would hope that we can do that to try to keep our meetings a little bit more under control. Feel free to push back on me if you like, but I really feel pretty strongly about that.
I found it helpful to get clarity on a lot of things. I didn't see hidden agendas. I felt even that was a little bit of a sorry, not sorry approach. I mean, I just, I think it got too personal when, you know, at least for myself. I didn't have clarity one way or the other, and I thought it was very helpful to go down that path, even though it took us some time. I think the goal there was noble in making sure that the right public input and things were done a way that was defensible and that we heard as much as we could through that process. I I found it helpful, even though we resulted in where we were headed in the beginning. I think we left that meeting, or at least I did, with a much clearer understanding and also a firmer conviction that the vote that we made on that specific issue was correct.
Okay, well, I'm glad you feel it was worth the time. Thank you, Lupita.
Yeah, I mean, I've been many, many meetings, many of them I I held and coordinated. And one of the key elements of having meetings like this is to give people the space to come to a consensus at the end and understanding voting, just so that you can meet a timeline. It's never been my goal. It's about making the right decision and give people the space to ask the questions that make them get to that space. I think that is the hallmark of a good chair. And I would just like to remind you that we are here because we want to volunteer work and do good job for the city. And some of us do have different perspectives on how that is accomplished and understanding where my colleagues come from, as well as me making a decision based on my own set of values, not yours, mine, so that I can feel comfortable voting one way or another. I think it should be respected. That is important. Because ultimately, we have to work together for a common, a common goal. And sometimes people have very legitimate, most of the time, in fact, I give people the benefit of the doubt that they have legitimate questions and I just don't understand what those are yet. And so going through a discussion helps me see what they're see that I don't see yet. And rushing to a vote where people are not comfortable, I think that is just makes for people feel uncomfortable. I have left uncomfortable in the past where I felt forced to vote for something that I wasn't comfortable voting for yet. And so, like I said, I've been many, many, many boards where I haven't had this kind of, you know, rush to vote when people do not understand where they're coming from yet. So yes, I do have an issue with the way this thing is run. It's not run properly. Watching this thing. And if you do have some comments to make to some of us about asking questions, you know, I will ask that you ask them in private separately to tell us, I do not want to have a meeting that is past four hours in front of people. You don't have to say that. You can tell me in private and then say, I will not allow you to ask questions because I've got to be done by a certain time. That was not a problem in the last board we had. We had long meetings and people asked questions. And at the end, we came to conclusions. And I felt comfortable thinking everybody's coming to this board with an intention to make good decisions and informed decisions. So I I like to listen to John, I like to listen to Sarah, I listen to you, I listen to anybody who was to speak. And then if I get what they're saying, if I don't, then I like to ask my questions. Sometimes I understand clearly, but sometimes I don't. And I would like to be respected for that, just like I've been respected for that and many other boards that I've been part of.
So do you feel that I've disrespected you?
Yes.
Okay, then I think that I should offer to step down as board chair. I'd like to have that discussion right now. Is there anybody else who would like to step up and be board chair? Because I honestly think that this has become counterproductive.
David, I appreciated what you said when you started the debrief. I think that is.
No, I I think that I've heard very, very explicitly that people feel I'm rushing things. I feel that that the SEEP was used as a tool to to make us divert our attention from approving a $700 million project that is very important to the city of Boulder and that needed to be dealt with. And in fact, we took a big detour tonight in a way that wasn't productive and that we didn't have the resources on hand to help us discuss that. And I find that to be a very bad precedent for planning board to set. And and if the fact that I got angry makes people feel that I'm disrespecting them, then I really should not be chairing this board. And I'm ready, I'm ready to hand over the reins to whoever would like to raise their hand and feel free to to offer up that to me right now. Lupita, you would, would you like to offer yourself up to be chair?
No, that's, I just want to respond to that because even your response to it said, you know, people are using this process to do something that is ascribing intent to people. I don't think you realize this, David. I don't think you're, you're doing it necessarily on purpose, but you don't realize that when you say these things, it does come across as you're ascribing ill intent to people. They have no ill intent. That's what I'm saying here.
Give an example of something that I said that it's.
You just said people are using this process to do, to do something. I, you know, you can replay the words. But when you say people are using the process as with an ulterior motive, that is giving people ill intent. I don't see people speaking here trying to do that. I didn't see it that way. Those words, then I said, because you may be blaming me for it, and I know I do not have that.
I do worry sometimes, Lupita, that sometimes you think David is always talking about you. And you 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 come at him and then as if it was you were in his head and I as a outside person, I sometimes think that you feel that comments are directed at you often by David, and I'm not certain that is 100% accurate because you're great. You're doing a great job and David's not always thinking about something to say to you. And 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 I just, you're great and don't I I I have seen this pattern where I see you get upset that then you respond to David and that or or it's not, I don't think that's what's always happening and and we don't know what's in each other's minds. And so you say that he's saying something that isn't true, may not be true about you, but you can't speak about anyone else, nor can I. So we all come at this. This is a oftentimes an overly politicized board when it shouldn't be, and we all care deeply about Boulder and we're the product of some contention that isn't our making and so we do fall into that trap sometimes of imputing motive to others, but I don't think that in this case, you know, David was trying to disrespect you because I think he was really trying to do the job of the chair, which is to keep it a meeting moving. That's not a popular position always, almost never really. And and I I happen to agree that if we didn't have the the staff on hand to help us make a decision, then it's difficult. I won't get into minutia of the actual matter because I agree that the timing and everything was off about what we could do between now and September 2nd, but I wanted to just pull it back a bit because I've seen this happen on the board over the last two, three cycles of people coming on and off. It seems unnecessary at times, and I certainly apologize for any role I've played. I I really tried to coil that. Listen, Crystal, boy, they got the brunt of it from me early on and as have each of you at different times. And, you know, I'm trying to own up to that and be vulnerable. And when I said what I said about motive, it was to put it out of that is what's in me tearing me apart on each side, not that I was right or wrong, but you all know I often feel that way because I've said it. So I put it out there being vulnerable. As in like, that's why it's hard for me to hear it objectively because I I I I grapple with that, my own conceptions, which are mine and mine alone. So we're all our own people and we don't know what's in each other's minds. I think we can all agree that nobody here wants anything except what they believe is best for Boulder.
John?
John, you're muted. You're muted.
Two bucks.
I since since I'm the one who initially raised the the issue of the seat. I presume that and maybe incorrectly that you're thinking of my motives in doing so, David, and I I would like to assure you that I'm not trying to stop that project. In fact, I've supported it at every stage so far. What I want is for a proper process to happen.
But that's I think
Finished. I'm finished.
Yeah, okay, but I want to make sure that I don't. Again, people put motives in my I'm not questioning motives. I'm saying that our job here was to to look at the seat and the CIP and I I think that we went way off into a big diversion into form-based code for Alpine Balsam without it being on our agenda. And with that, and so I think I agree with Lupita. I'm a very poor chair and I should step down. But before we get back I'll go ahead and do that and you guys can think about who you want to put forward in the future.
David, I don't think we want you to. No one wants you to step down.
It's not tonight.
No, nobody wants you to step down.
I've been told very explicitly that I've been doing a very bad job as chair tonight. And and that is not a good place for me to be. And I don't get paid for this, by the way, and I it may not be what I was trained to do. So, yeah, and as a result, I think it's, you know, it's 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 more pain than I'm willing to put up with, honestly.
David, one person said that.
So. All right. Well, I think with that, think about who you would like to take you take over the reins and we'll 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 talk next week.
I would prefer, David, I really don't want you to step down. That's I think that that is a that would be an unfortunate outcome from a conversation that I I don't think was as off bounds as you perceived it to be, which may just be a consequence of you're having more familiarity and having been on the board for longer than I have. And for me, trying to understand, you know, specific to this evening, trying to understand what it was that John was hoping, why he wanted to see. That's all I was trying. If it took time to figure that out and then the end result was.
So, yeah, and I and I'm sorry I interrupted you, John. I I felt that I heard you attributing intent on me that I'm a little tired of people doing that because I'm really trying to stick to the subject at hand. I'm sorry, you can you can go on with your point.
My I I just feel like we've had a miscommunication. I think there's been a miscommunication and a misunderstanding about what that part of the conversation was about and you know, there I don't, I just trying, it was trying to, for me, it was trying to understand what the purpose of a SEEP would have been and coming to realize, thanks to Hella, that a lot of that public input had already been there already was public input. You know, we we haven't seen that. We haven't seen the packet, so we didn't have it, or I didn't have any awareness of that public participation process, public engagement process. It was very helpful for Hella to indicate that it had happened and that we would be looking at it. So could could that conversation have been briefer? I suppose it could have been, but I I think it was actually just humbly, I think it was part of the CIP process because the CEAP process is a component of that. So it's I just didn't see it as as much of a diversion as I I think you must have experienced it as, but that's not a that's not because we disagree. It's because we just perceived it differently. So I do not want you to step down. That you you do a very good job. I'm I'm sure it's frustrating to have people with strong opinions and strong perceptions and who want to participate, but you do a very good job. You really you do a great job. And so I I it would be unfortunate if 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 your decision, if you stuck with this decision, that is not what I would like to see as the outcome here. I prefer that we figure out how to better have space for the kinds of questions that we ask and that you stay as board chair, but that would be my preferred outcome.
Okay, well, I John, I I cut you off. I'm sorry. You can finish your thought about this evening and
Oh, I I think I got my point across. I don't need to embroider, but I I would like to say that I agree with Sarah. I think I think you are doing a nice job as a chairman and you should continue. I mean, we there are plenty of things that we disagree on, but in terms of running, running a show, I think you do a nice job and and I hope you continue.
Well, David did try multiple times to pull it back and I think your passion for the topic, you you kept coming back at it, John, so many times. That it became difficult because you clearly wanted to get to it. The point was abundantly clear. Then what we were to do with it next was unclear because the staff told us they couldn't do more at this time. And and then offered to get back to us, and I think that could have said, can you get back to us within three days or two days? I think we often, we're debriefing now and it's really just us. You, if 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 the chair position, and this may or may not be true, is to govern the meeting and I'm sure getting the words wrong, then there's a point where we all need to agree that to disagree and move on. Because it's a thankless job to keep us on track and David to try multiple times and wasn't with the sense of there being motives of obstructionism that he was trying to divert. It was really just that. Okay, let's we have a CIP plan in front of us that we do need to address. And somehow it all got over emotional, I feel like. I don't know how we as a board, it's I'm I'm almost done, so it's not really relevant to me going forward, but I've seen this function really well and and I and then this tonight, I thought was an example of we were all really wanting the same thing. There was no, there was like a a lack of backing down on it that then pushed it to a boiling point.
I think I think where things went a little array was that it became two conflicting purposes here. There was a group of us trying to figure out you know, the the process that so that we feel comfortable making a decision and there was you know, an intention to keep things on track in terms of getting a motion, you know, voted on, but we were not arriving at the same place because we were actually looking at two different issues. Now in in a board, usually when these things come up, you know, you have to make a priority that bring everybody together so that when we get to the motion voting, everybody is ready to do so. This is what I think that we were not kind of in the same space. And I was listening to people that were trying to get comfortable with the idea of moving to the voting piece until they feel comfortable being there. I've been in that position many times as a chair where that happens and you have to wait a little bit to get and then focus on getting to the questions that people are asking so that they get to that space on their own organically. So therefore, everything becomes smooth and and fluid. Here, I think it was this, and I I have, and I I I empathize with you, David, because I've been in that position too with, you know, time ticking and you want to get things done, but if people are not ready for
Let me just, can I address that?
Yes.
It wasn't time ticking. It's the
Oh, it does. You you mentioned the four hours.
Well,
Multiple times mentioned times. And so it was clear to me that that was counting for you and and that's that's part of the issue.
Okay, it was part of the issue.
Yeah, and that's okay, David is
But it wasn't just
With that, it's okay.
It wasn't just time ticking. It was that we weren't dealing with the agenda item. And I've been through, this is my fifth CIP review, and I know I I know enough to know what the scope of CIP is. And I I was trying to communicate to the board of the scope of of the CIP. Now, there may be this disagreement as to what the scope of CIP is and that we want to bring in the the seat process into Alpine Balsam. I understand that that's what happened. But to me, that was very frustrating because we get told by the experts in front of us that that is not an appropriate use of the CAP process, but the board doesn't believe the staff. And so we have to go and and a lot of people in the room don't even know. Can can anyone tell me what a CIP? Has anybody sat through a CIP? A SEEP? Has anyone sat through one? Do you know what one looks like? Or are we just
But that is what I did ask that question and and it was helpful to hear that it's a very long and involved process and it ends up being, you know, so I think that I maybe the challenge here is that you that when when we ask questions, it sounds like we're challenging staff and that's
It's not their intention.
Well, I I understand that, but but if it does get too far afield from the the subject that we're dealing with, then it does feel like, well, that you've heard the answer, but you're not going to accept it and we're going to go on and on and on and on on this thing. But and there's also the you know, I guess I I guess if I I feel like if there were really a good case that see should be applied to one of these projects, that it would be well thought out and presented in such a way that you could get board majority on it. But but I I just I I hate to do it all with a bunch of, you know, with with people who if if we haven't been fully, if we haven't fully understood the seat, what that seat process would do to a particular project, it becomes very difficult to inform ourselves of all the ramifications of that offhand. So in some ways, I'd really prefer that we would sometimes just accept what we're being told by the professionals who work for the city and who give us an answer rather than continuing to push, push, push. And and that's, you know, I mean, I understand. You may think I'm trying to rush it, but but you know, we we went way into an agenda item that's not coming up for two more weeks without the the experts in the room.
So I feel I actually feel like we got exactly to that outcome, like that by having the opportunity to ask the questions about how what would a seat entail? What would it be? We actually backed off the idea of a SEEP. I mean, I mean, John's motions didn't pass. We backed off the idea. We got feedback from Jacob. They're going to come back and we got feedback from Hella. I mean, may maybe the conversation went on too long, but we got to the place we got to a good place. So I I guess I I I know it's frustrating and 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 I can sense how frustrating it is for you personally, but I also feel like we end up in good places through this process. I will try going forward to you know, limit my questions, but I I don't feel I don't personally feel like I'm challenging staff when I'm asking them a question that's meant to illuminate for me an issue that's been put on the table. And I don't question their expertise. I I know our staff is very good and I really respect what they do and how hard they're working and how hard they've been working with a reduced with an increased workload and a reduced staff load, staff capacity. I I I really respect that, respect them. But I and I want to be able to ask questions without presumption that I'm that I'm challenging their their skills or their knowledge. I'm trying to understand. And I'm and I'm pointing to things that I don't understand about something that they've written or a proposal that's been put on the table. I want their input. I that so I guess I'm 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 you know, I'll come back to. I don't want you to step down and I and I think that we have generally this year been functioning really, really well. And we've had a lot of tough projects in front of us. And I think we've done a really good job and I think you've done a really good job and maybe this was this was a particularly frustrating evening on something that presumably was should have been a slam dunk over an hour and a half. But, you know, a board member brought up a thing and we needed to discuss it and and that's how I that's how I perceived what happened tonight and nothing more than that. But bottom line is I do not want you to step down. But bottom line is I do not want you to step down.
Well, the our chair will be criticized for letting meetings run too long and and this was. You know. I I I do think that. That this went longer than we needed to, but but if you feel that this is the way you would like it to go, I'll. I'll budget my my evenings to go quite late. And we, because I am a person who will accommodate. I don't cut people off. And I resent being told that I'm a bad chair. I do. And I will not. Take that well. I don't get paid for this. Uh, and I I resent it if someone starts to. To give me a little lecture about the things I'm doing wrong. Uh, because I don't do that to other people. I I may accidentally imply intent from time to time. Because I do get a little bit annoyed when we go off from the CIP to try to. Do a whole bunch of stuff on Alpine balsam, I must admit, but fine. But I but to come back at me with a with a. With lectures on how. Inappropriate I'm being. Uh, is is very, very hurtful to me. So.
I'll I'll speak for myself.
And I I I spend a lot of time and a lot of effort on this and I don't mean to to say that to you, Sarah.
No, I understand and and we all, we're all, we all spend a lot of time on this and 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 I. We all appreciate each other's work on this. It's it is a. It's both an honor and a lot of work. So. Um, and I do know it's extra work to be the chair. Um, and the last thing. I'm sure that any of us want is for you to feel that somehow you are not. Respected and appreciated because you are respected and appreciated. Um, and. Well, I think we just need to find, make sure that we have. Ways to. Uh, manage those moments when. There's a disconnect between some who feel we've gone off track and some who feel we're on track and maybe it's really just. Trying to limit. Even using a timer, like let's limit conversation about this to 10 minutes. Because oftentimes I find my in my own world, my work world. If I say we're gonna have a 15 minute meeting. You get a lot of stuff done in 15 minutes because everybody knows you got to get off the phone. So maybe we try it that way.
Well, we did. We did do time limits for questions leading up to the. The annexation deliberate, uh, the public hearing, but then we also had the ability to ask more later. We can entertain time limits on things as a way to try to. Do that, but we'll have to think carefully about how that's done. Um, if we do it, I think, then I would like to maybe try that again. It's just with the, but it it it's kind of. It's hard if you don't then open it up and then the next meeting we were there for seven and a half hours, right? So so I did, you know, it 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 worked on the first meeting, but then we still had a lot to ask, but it but it helped with the public because they knew when they were able to talk. Uh, but I think for the the meeting on September 2nd is going to require a lot of preparation in terms of how we're going to make that thing. Happen in a productive way.
Right, and I and I personally, I haven't seen any of the materials.
We haven't. Materials yet, so we go.
But but my, I think my point is in our own internal discussions. When we get to one of these bumps in the road where there is friction. We maybe we stop, take a breath. Create a space. 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 30 minutes, whatever it is, and that's the length of the conversation and we conclude at the end of that time period. So that we can move on. And and keep things. Because you do, we do have to keep things moving on. None of us want to be here until 11 o'clock every every Thursday, every other Thursday night, so. But I. And I do appreciate that you are, I mean, I I know you and you're a generous person who. You want people to to be able to say what they have to say and I appreciate that. And it is also okay to say this conversation is going on for 15 minutes. And then we're gonna wrap it up. Um, and I would be fine. I personally, as a member of your board, would be perfectly happy with something like that as a tool.
Okay, well, that's good feedback. Do other people feel that that would be reasonable?
I I guess, you know, I I slightly different perspective on that, which is. I it's it's not even 10 o'clock. We got to a good place. Uh, we've been spending, I don't know, half an hour, 45 minutes just on this. Um, which I think this is really healthy, by the way. But I I. I I think that obviously being the neophyte here, the meetings that I've participated in so far, I think have been well run. I think overall we've respected each other's times and opinions and thoughts. Um, and I, you know, if if we run a little bit long on a topic because people want to understand it more deeply to be more sure about their decisions. I I don't really see any problem with that. And I I don't, I don't really felt like we ran that long tonight. Um, on this, you know, on on these issues. So I I do think that things were. Whether whether it's me or you or or anybody on this board, maybe it been, you know, maybe all of us to take a step back and try to. Try to not take things personally. And just take it from the perspective that people are trying to do good work and and. And 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 really on on the behalf of Boulder and the citizens of Boulder and understand things properly so that when we vote. We vote in a place that we're comfortable and confident. Um, at least that's my perspective. So I I, well, I'm 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 all for someone saying, yeah, and and I and I and I respect that completely, that you need to keep the meeting on track. I don't think this meeting was necessarily off track to begin with. I I I don't know what time we ended, but it wasn't like. It wasn't an all all night knockdown drag out either. So.
Yeah, well, you know, tonight is my birthday. If I'm willing to be here doing this, then I don't know what, you know, they said to complain. I do, I do say, you know. That I understand when we we want to finish things expediently, that I understand. That and I also understand that we have people coming from different perspectives. I I I I don't know who's telling you your, the meetings are too long. I would love to talk to that person. Because just like Georgie mentioned. Um, the goal is for the board to come together in a consensus and I think we do that regularly. It does take longer when you have people coming from different perspectives. And with different sets of knowledge, but I think what I have enjoyed about the. The working in this board is precisely that, that I enjoy. Listening and understanding where people are coming from. I'm learning a lot. And even especially when we come from different perspectives and at the end we can come to a consensus. I appreciate that. That's when I feel the most satisfied. Because at the end, even if we have these agreements. To be able to end a meeting and still, you know, want to work with that person in the future, that is the hallmark for me. To be in a place what I want to be. So when you just say I don't want anything to do with it, that's definitely very dysfunctional, but I haven't felt that way. And it's okay to disagree because sometimes we haven't voted and, you know, many of our votes are not unanimous. And that to me is also healthy. So, yeah, if you're in a in a relationship and I'm just in general terms where. Every every decision is always the the same. It's usually because somebody is in control and the other person is not. It so to me, having some disagreements and especially times. To trying to come to a consensus, that's time very well spent. So. I I I say, if somebody is telling you that four hours is too long for a meeting, maybe it is. Uh, but if at the end of that meeting, we all come out feeling like we all individually made the best decision based on the information that we gather. Um, then I think it was very well spent time. So I just want to be clear on that, that that has been my goal and, you know, in in my experience, like I said, when I say I all. Board meetings that I've been part of, that is kind of like the way that I work with and it's satisfying. Um, at the end of the day, but when that doesn't work, it is 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 not satisfying. So obviously, you know, we need to help. Uh, get you at a place where you can feel comfortable that what you're doing, you know, is productive. Um, and so maybe we can have some. I don't know, maybe some signals or something to get to that point where, you know. Remind where we are, maybe stuck, asking the questions that you think you already answered or somebody else answered. Uh, at the end of the day, I just would like to come across here that, you know, I appreciate your work, appreciate working in this board. Uh, and working with all of you and I have, you know, I feel like, you know, I gather. Uh, more benefits than negatives, so it's definitely a a good thing. And so I just. I I will like this to find a way to just come out of these meetings. Whether they're last 20 minutes or four hours, you know, feeling that we are done our best. That is my goal personally. So if we can do it in 20 minutes, great, but if it takes four hours, I'm okay with that, even on my birthday.
Well, given that, I guess we should let you get back to your birthday. Um. Uh, like I said, all all it all it would take would be for one of you to. Tell me that you want to just take it over because I I'm perfectly happy to step aside, but. I guess you've all kind of said I should keep going and. I'm not gonna. You know. Not gonna drop this if if you feel that it's okay. Uh, but uh, but it was a, it was unusually difficult. Uh, there have been a few of those lately and just. Realized that, you know, not everybody is. Armin Zuckerman, I'm not quite as. Put together as he is in terms of how to get things done. Uh, so just. Help me a little slack from time to time. So thanks so much. Anything else we should talk about before we break?
Just wishing Lupita a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And David, can I just say, I appreciate that you were. You brought your feelings to us to into this conversation. I think that's helpful.
All right. Yeah, that was a debrief. All right. Now Cindy, we're Jake, well done.
PH1, behind the meetings, sessions.
All right, good night.
Good debriefing.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night.